Good evening and welcome to everybody, sitting and standing, to the Special Calabasas City Council Meeting of December 6, 2023. Tonight I’m joined by Mayor Pro Tem Alicia Weintraub, council members Albrecht, Bizagin, and Kraut, as well as our city manager, city attorney, and a lot of staff here tonight, our city clerk, of course. If you wish to provide public comment, please complete a speaker card in the back of the room at the table and give it to our city clerk here. Indicate whether you’re going to be speaking on an item on the agenda during the regular public comment, and give it to our city clerk, Amari Hernandez. You’ll be allowed up to three minutes to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Tonight, we are privileged to have a lot of dignitaries here, but we’re going to ask our own dignitary deputy Mason DiMatteo to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all you do to help keep us safe. May I have a motion to approve the agenda or an alternative motion?
Still moved.
I had one question. Can we move, can we continue the item regarding the date setting?
Yes, and I was going to ask that also. So, the request and second on that is to move the item related to our 2024 City Council meeting schedule to our, how about to our workshop on December 15th, which is already a perfect time for that? Do we need to take a vote on that, Mr. City Attorney, or can we do it by?
The approval of the agenda can include that motion. The approval of the agenda as modified to delete item five.
Great. So, we have a motion to approve the agenda and a second with that, with that item moving to December 15th. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you. And next, we have, tonight, and if you look in the back, you’ll see some of the proudest and finest from LA County Fire. We are recognizing LA County Fire Department on their centennial, that is 100th anniversary, with the following proclamation tonight: Whereas in 1949, the Consolidated Fire Protection District was established by the Board of Supervisors through their consolidation of numerous fire districts which existed since the 1920s, and whereas from 1967 to 86, there existed four fire protection districts within LA County, all of which were governed by the Board of Supervisors: the Consolidated Fire Protection District, CFPD, Universal Fire Protection District, Dominguez Fire Protection District, and Wrightwood Fire Protection District. In addition, there was the Forester and Fire Warden, F and FW, which is chartered office in the county and was funded by the General Fund. And whereas the LA County Fire Department has a very rich and unique history, which is full of innovation and daring accomplishments, from designing the 911 system and initiating a paramedic program in the 1970s, to the current-day urban search and rescue and homeland security sections, the Fire Department is a leader and model to fire departments around the world. The department’s ability to develop new techniques and tactics to fight fires of all kinds has benefited not only the residents they serve, but the fire service in general, both nationally and internationally. And whereas the Emergency Operations Bureau, including the Training and EMS Bureau, nine major firefighting divisions, Air and Wildland Division, and Homeland Security Section, and as the fire department’s service area includes suburban neighborhoods, city centers, commercial districts, sandy beaches, mountain ranges, a varying terrain which causes unique emergency incident challenges, including increased AMS calls and a variety of fires that can take place on any single day, whether it be wildland structure, railroad, aircraft, vehicle, et cetera, as well as ocean rescues and medical calls across 72 miles of coastline. Now, therefore, the City Council of Calabasas does hereby celebrate the 100th anniversary of the LA County Fire Department and extend appreciation for their exemplary service and encourage the community to join in celebration and gratitude of the Fire Department. Congratulations. And we’re going to present a certificate and take a picture, but before I do, I’ll look to council comments on this. Go ahead. Councilmember Albrecht.
It warms me so much to see this. My dad was a volunteer fireman in Menhasset on Long Island for almost 20 years. I’ve been on fire trucks as a kid. We used to take them on the Fourth of July. He’d bring the old trucks to the neighborhood. All of us would go out and shoot off firecrackers and ride around the neighborhood. But he also put his life on the line, and when he was, got older and he wasn’t able to do that, the company accepted him to do admin work. Hats off to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraut.
Yeah, it’s easy to say thank you when the Woolsey Fire rolls through here and you guys are there on the front line protecting us, but I think it’s important that we remember that you guys have saved us a dozen times this year. You guys are so quick and on the spot, we don’t even know it’s happening. By the time we get a notice of a fire, it’s already out. And I know that you guys spend a lot of your time on health-related calls, and for that, you know, you’re saving lives, you’re saving our community, and we really appreciate each and every one of you.
Mayor Pro Tem Weintraub.
Just wanted to say thank you for your service today and every day, and has been mentioned. It’s not just about putting out fires, but keeping us safe in all aspects of our life, and so we’re so grateful for everything you do for our community. Thank you.
Yes, I’m going to add one little thing here. I know everyone’s very appreciative of you and expressed appreciation, but, you know, very soon, I understand, there may be a ballot measure to help the Fire Department modernize some of its facilities and some of its equipment, and I hope, even though no one likes paying taxes, I hope that the voters consider doing that as a public safety measure and as an expression of gratitude to the firefighters who do need that modernized equipment for their services.
And before we come down, I’ll add my thanks as well. Thanks to each of you, and of course, we have a high-ranking chief here tonight, and all of you from different engine companies and divisions, LA County. It’s amazing. We have the pleasure to go up and see you work up at King Gillette Ranch each year and train and prepare, and the latest air equipment has been amazing. What you did for the city, yes, we sadly lost nine homes and had some damage in the Woolsey Fire, but what you did to protect lives of all individuals, people, pets during that fire, and what you do year-round, because it’s year-round fire season, and what you’re doing to help prepare us and putting yourselves out on the line is amazing, and there’s nothing more we can do today than say thank you tremendously. Does, do any of you wish to say anything before we present and take a quick photo? Thank you, chief.
Is it on? Perfect. Thank you, Mayor Shapiro, and members of the City Council, and all of the residents of the great city of Calabasas. Yes, you’re right, you do have a very high-ranking chief here tonight. Drew Smith, please stand up. Drew Smith is your, is your local fire chief day in and day out, in addition to the men and women standing behind me from your fire stations, Fire Station 68 and Fire Station 125. So, it’s our distinct honor to be here to accept this most appreciated scroll from the city of Calabasas commemorating our 100-year anniversary. So, back in 1923, the Fire Department started, and we’ve been your Fire Department for the last 32 years, from 1991 to present. So, I apologize, I didn’t introduce myself. I’m Anthony Maroni, and I’m the fire chief of the Consolidated Fire Protection District of Los Angeles County. I’m the 10th fire chief, and I have the honor of leading my team of 5,000 members on our centennial anniversary. So, thank you very much. We really appreciate Calabasas. Yeah, thank you.
Let’s, and council member, for councilmember Albrecht, we still do give rides on fire trucks. We just, we just don’t shoot fireworks off anymore, so my apologies for that. It sounds like that was a lot of fun. Yeah. Thank you very much. We’re going to come down and take a picture with everybody.
Yes, absolutely.
Certificate. Thank you.
Megan? Do we want to try to get all of our crew members? Okay.
That was exciting. That was great. I forgot to tell them, we’re all here for them tonight, but that’s okay. All right, we’ll move on to new business. Number, item number one is the consideration and approval of appointment of Alan Pine, that’s councilmember Albrecht’s appointment, to the Planning Commission, and Julie Shai Sobel, councilmember Kraut’s appointment, and Mark Shear, my appointment, to the Library Commission. So, are any, you’re all present? You can come up to the podium, please, so we can see you and honor you and question you, if anyone has questions. Okay. Do any of my council colleagues have any questions for the nominees at this point? Are there any members of the public wishing to ask questions? Okay, seeing none, other than saying thank you, may I have a motion to approve the appointments of Alan Pine to the Planning Commission, and Julie Shai Sobel, and Mark Shear to the Library Commission, and thank them in advance for their service to the community? So moved.
Second.
It’s been moved to second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. And now, I get the pleasure to administer the oath of office to all three of you at the same time. So, all right, we raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. Alan, Julia, Mark, I state your name.
I, Julie Shai Sobel.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon, upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Thank you. Do, do any of you wish to say anything at this time? If not, you’re welcome to come back any.
I’m surprised we’re going to have to defend things from, from the library.
Absolutely, at all times. Don’t forget that. Thank you. There are everybody in the chamber here tonight. Thank you. Thank you all very much for giving your time. Great job. Okay, we’ll move on to announcements and introductions. I’ll start on this side this time. Councilmember Ed Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have two announcements, and one’s a very happy one. Hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. I did. It was my birthday. I was born two days before Thanksgiving, and every seven years, it lands on Thanksgiving. So, what a great holiday. So, I’m not trying to brag about it, but I know it’s a special one. I wish we had this holiday every month. It would be terrific. On a sadder note, though, I’d like to announce the loss of a resident that was very important to our community, John Suara. He was a valued and very spirited community leader and environmental advocate. He and his wife, Joanne, formed and led the Calabasas Coalition. They have both spoken in this chamber very often, and to the council, and on many occasions, to name just a few. They were here most recently about six months ago, and it’s a great loss, though, really be missed. Their presence was important to the community, and sorry to Joanne for her loss. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraut.
I would like to share with you all, if you’re not aware, I’m sure there’s plenty of people in this room that are aware, that we are going to be having a menorah lighting ceremony, celebration, in our Civic Arts Plaza with, I’m sorry, tomorrow, not tomorrow, Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, next Tuesday, at 5:30 PM.
At 6:30.
6:30. That’s okay.
I want to welcome my fellow councilmembers for keeping me on track. I had a couple more, but I’m going to hold off and see if they get them right instead. Thank you.
I think we’ll move to Mayor Pro Tem Weintraub next somehow.
Just to back Peter up, the Commons Caruso Hanukkah Celebration will be taking place next Tuesday, December 12th, at 6:30 in the City Hall Plaza. So, shared announcement there. And I also want to take this opportunity to congratulate our law enforcement. There was a very unfortunate situation that happened yesterday. There were two random assaults of two individuals on the west side of Calabasas, but within 24 hours, the suspect was arrested. So, kudos to law enforcement and public safety technologies for apprehending the suspect. And just, I would be remiss if I did not mention another situation that we had with Edison this morning. They were supposed to finish work last night before school started, and to no one’s surprise, the work did not finish, and it was a complete disaster getting to Calabasas High School, Viewpoint, Louisville, Chaparral, and all of the schools in the Mulholland Corridor. So, we need to continue pressing Edison to get their work done and not have these significant impacts to the community. The stress that these students face getting to school during this situation is just so unfortunate. You have these new drivers trying to navigate stopped roads, trying to rush for school. It’s just not safe to anyone. We have residents trying to leave to get to appointments and work, so we really have to fix this, because Edison’s not going anywhere, and we’re going to continue to do improvements through the city. So, I know we have a new Public Works Director who’s committed to working on this and our city manager, but I just want to acknowledge the impact that a great majority of our community experienced this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bizagin.
The only announcement I have today is I wanted to thank our supervisor, Lindsay Horvath, for coming to visit Calabasas today, and we all had lunch and took her around the city in groups to show her various sights, and so we appreciate that she came out of the way out here for that.
Thank you, and I have a couple. I want to start, since our last meeting, I presented the State of the City address, and I want to give a big thank you to our staff who did a tremendous job and ran a wonderful event for the community. Also, speaking of community events, this Sunday, 5 o’clock, at the Commons, is an oldie but a goodie movie. The Commons is putting on, not the Commons, I’m sorry, the theaters are putting on at the Commons, and it’s called It’s a Wonderful Life. It’s beginning at 5 o’clock. They have been kind enough to allow me to pick a couple charities, and they’re donating 100% of the proceeds of the ticket sales to those charities, so, and they’re local. So, please join. Tickets are still available. I don’t want to sound like a ticket broker, but there are some tickets available. Also, speaking of council, we have December 13th, next week, is the annual reorganization. So, you’ll get to, we’ll get to swear in and select and swear in a new mayor and a new mayor pro tem for the coming year. So, we invite everyone to come join, and RSVP if you’re coming, which will help. Quick announcements, Calabasas High School Girls Water Polo has been doing exceptionally well over the past few weeks, playing great. I’m looking for help over there from some students, but I may be wrong. That’s the announcements I got, and the Calabasas High School Boys Basketball Team is actually undefeated at this point. They were 6-0 for the first time in a long time. And last but not least, Calabasas High School has their annual music programs. Tonight is one, but we’re glad you’re here, but tomorrow night is their other program at the Performing Arts Center. There are tickets available. And lastly, for those celebrating, I wish everyone, beginning tomorrow night, a very happy Hanukkah, and may the light of the menorahs bring light into all our lives. We certainly could use it. All right, and we’re on to oral communication and public comment. I’m going to again indicate, if you want to speak on any item not on the agenda or on the agenda, please fill out a card in the back of the room, give it to our city clerk, and I only have two cards on non-agendized items at this point. Before I do so, I think we forgot Mr. City Attorney to report out, we had a special meeting and a special closed session this week as a council. Would you please report out on that?
Yes, gladly. I think that ties into the announcements component. The council met in closed session on Monday, December 4th, in the morning, regarding the West Village litigation and regarding a second item of anticipated litigation. The council did not consider the second item. On the first item, the West Village litigation, the report out is as follows: The City Council directed staff and council to ask the parties and trial court for an extension of the deadline for the city to file an appellate petition to the Second District Court of Appeal, enabling time for additional consideration of the council’s options. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, if you wish to speak on any item, please fill out a card, give it to our city clerk. I’m going to call on a public speaker card for Anita McQuillan, McQuillen, my apology. Welcome.
My name is Anita McQuillen, a longtime resident of Calabasas. I am asking council members to appeal the proposed West Village project decision. I read through the final report, and in my opinion, there was a failure to adequately represent the voices of the Calabasas residents. I believe council members owe it to us to appeal this decision utilizing the services of lawyers who are experienced in land issues. It is particularly important to appeal the decision because there are safety issues at stake. There is a matter of ingress and egress in the area around the proposed development, and there is the circumstance of it being in a high-fire hazardous zone. The West Village development proposed is very concentrated, having large numbers of homes in a high-risk far area. Entering or leaving these homes will depend on access to Las Vergenes, an already overutilized road. In times of panic, it could be disastrous. The high risk of far is real. During the Woolsey Fire, the junction between Las Vergenes and the 101 was impacted greatly. Just north of the 101 and to the east of Las Vergenes, seven single-family home dwellings were destroyed by far. This could have been much worse if it had not been for the resourceful residents who stayed behind to find mandatory instruction to leave. They stayed in the area, warning authorities that far had broken out. In addition, they hosed down their own and neighbors’ properties and any small fires that had developed. It is believed that their actions may have saved many more properties from burning. Regardless, the fact that any structures burned suggests that resources are already inadequate to deal with the far of this size in Calabasas. During the Woolsey Fire, a total of three people died, 1,643 structures were destroyed, and 295,000 people were evacuated. We cannot risk an even more disastrous event with larger numbers being displaced. While I understand there may be some development in the location of West Village, the West Village project area, the current proposal is too concentrated and poses an additional hazard when a far breaks out into Calabasas area. I urge you to appeal this West Village project ruling. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Larissa Byrne.
Councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Larissa Byrne. I’ve been here 26 years now in Calabasas, in the Las Vergenes Valley, and I’m grief-stricken, so forgive me, but the loss of John Suara was big for a lot of us over there, because he believed in respect, number one. A lot of us would not be involved with the city or even here if not for he and his wife showing us a way to do that with respect, with education, and a true desire to make our communities what they are. There’s so many good people here, obviously, and I feel strongly that we have shown up over and over to say, the Las Vergenes Valley is the scariest place to be in a fire, because we cannot get out. And I’ve always done what the sheriff said. When the sheriffs come through and say, it’s time, get ready, get ready, we do. I’m not going to do it next time, because the two losses of lives in our valley were in their cars trying to get out. And I think we aren’t against development over on that side. We’re against crazy stuff being put in when we can’t even get out. We need ways for us to be safe, and I would encourage you to appeal this decision. We support you in all that you do for the city. I’m afraid, I’m really afraid, because we brush clear, we trim our trees, we move things from beside our house to try to be cooperative and do what we can to prepare. But if we can’t get out, it’s a no-brainer. And a lot of my neighbors have a feeling that if it’s not appealed, what the message is from the City Council is that you care more about potential residents than you do about the residents that live here now. And I’m trying to be, in John’s memory, explain to them, they have to be involved, and they have to try to come up with solutions to offer. But I really encourage you guys, please, think about us over on that west side. We really have some constraints that make us all very tenuously hanging on, so if you can, please appeal this project. That’s all. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I have no other public speaker cards on non-agendized items, so, Madam Clerk, did we get a last minute?
No, Mr. Mayor, this is for number six.
All right. And I’ll ask again, if you’re going to speak on item, the big item we have tonight is item number six, please fill out a card now, give it to our city clerk. No reason to wait. Let’s get, keep those cards coming, please. Appreciate it. Okay, we will move on to consent items one through three and four, with item five already being moved to the 1215-23 meeting. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull any of the consent items remaining? Hearing none. Is there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none. We will now move and ask for a motion to approve consent items three and four.
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Passes 5-0. Thanks very much, and there was something Madam Clerk advised me of that I missed earlier on, so I apologize, but it’s, it’s a quick collage, is that correct? I want to make sure what is correct. All right. This should have been an announcement, so I apologize to my colleagues and everyone. It’s a collage of the Mayor’s Youth Council. You can see it there, what they’ve done in this past year. We should have some members here tonight. They have been amazing representatives of our city and our city council, and want to thank them very much for all their great work. Is that good? All right. Now, we will move on to item number six. This is a public hearing for consideration of the following matter: City Council Resolution Number 2023-1880, approving an addendum to a certified final pro- Approving an Addendum to a Certified Final Programmatic Environmental Impact Report and approving file numbers SPR 2023-005, CUP 2023-003, and 004 and 005, SCP-2023-003, and TTM 2023-002. A request to improve a portion of the Commons at Calabasas, known as the Commons, with a mixed-use housing and commercial development located at 4799 Commons Way, APN 2068-003-021, within the commercial mixed-use CMU zoning district, scenic corridor SC, and affordable housing AH overlay zones. The proposed project includes: One, demolition of existing 33,091 square foot movie theater and portions of the existing surface parking and associated landscaping. And, two, construction of 210,921 square feet of total new floor area consisting of 119 multifamily housing units, including 12 units, 10%, deed restricted, affordable to low-income families, and 24,163 square feet of new restaurant and retail space within the new mixed-use buildings identified as Buildings A and Building B. And the project site comprises five adjacent parcels within the six APNs 2068-003-021, and 020, and 022, and 023, 024, and 028. Development will be limited to one of the parcels, parcel B, APN number 2068-003-021. At its meeting held on November 16th, 2023, the Planning Commission recommended that the city council approve the project and addendum to the Certified Final Programmatic Environmental Impact Report. Madam Clerk, has the proof of posting and publication been filed for this public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We received additional correspondence tonight, which was placed on the dais.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Are there any additions or changes to the staff report? And we have Michael Klein, we have Michael Glenn and Chris presenting tonight.
Uh, no changes to the staff.
Great, so please proceed.
Your introduction was wonderful. Mr. Mayor, it's always a pleasure to be here with you and the rest of the council. And I'm glad to see so much public participation. Um, I have about 20 slides, I'm going to try to get through them relatively quickly. And I'll jump right in. So first, a little overview of the area. This is aerial photo of, of where we are right now, actually. And we have old town over here on the east side, classic Calabasas, West Ridge, and Craftsman's Corner. Now, the Calabasas Park Center area is highlighted and right here on the screen. And we will be talking tonight about a portion of that, which is the Commons. So jumping right in, in 1997, this council had adopted the Park Center Master Plan. It had two components, which is the actual master condition use permit and the design and development guidelines. Together, they formulate the master plan. Had a vision statement in there that the master plan area provided a unique opportunity for development of a central public space to provide urban amenities. It did cap the development density at 900,000 square feet and included a maximum retail component of 200,000 square feet. It established procedural requirements for the future development in that area. Basically, city council approved implementing conditional use permits. And it established the allowed land uses for that whole entire area, being overnight accommodations, retail uses, office uses, public uses, and open space. It also took a look at traffic overall for, for the entire future development of this area and capped an average daily trip of 15,665, after which, if future development were to go over that, a new level of service study would be required to analyze area intersection impact and establish some area-wide design standards. Second part of that was the development guidelines. Mimicked a lot of what the master condition use permit did and then implemented also some more site-specific development standards for different planning zones. It broke it up into different areas and listed development standards for them. Uh, also in 1997, we saw the approval of the implementing CUP for the Commons. Mostly as we know it today, it's had a few modifications over the years. That implementing CUP had a market, a drugstore, bookstore, the movie theater, restaurant, retail uses. It allowed for sales of alcoholic beverages from the market and the drugstore and had a shared parking reduction component that was approved for it. Along came, fast forward to 2008, and we had our 2030 general plan adoption. It kind of roped the, this area into a larger concept of the East Village. The vision for that East Village is to create an expanded village environment by including new professional offices, retail, commercial uses, visitor accommodations, cultural facilities, and residential development connected with pedestrian spaces, plaza, and parks, and had a general plan policy that would facilitate the establishment of a downtown district for Calabasas Road, east of Parkway, Calabasas, and emphasized a pedestrian-oriented mix of retail, office, and residential uses as well as pedestrian connections to adjacent residential areas. And the, basically, the concept for this site we're talking about tonight is basically promote mixed-use infill to have basically ground floor retail with office and residential spaces above and some parking along with it. Now, fast forward again, and you all remember the housing element we recently adopted. Kind of confirmed that this is one of the priority housing sites. It's site number 11 in that. You can see down here on the table, that's right out of our general plan. Will provide up to 202 housing units towards the city's RENA requirement. A little overview of the project site itself from this aerial. Area outlined in red is the entire Commons property. It consists of five parcels, 24 acres gross, 19.3 acres net. Currently has 218,000, a little north of that of development on the property right now. It's at a .26 FAR. We're going to be talking about parcel B today. The project in front of you is entirely on parcel B. Parcel B's statistics are 11.7 acres gross, 8.4 acres net, and 100,656 square feet of that development is existing on parcel B currently. The site has five main entrances and exits where the arrows are on this, on this image. The main entrances for the public are the one on Civic Center Way, two on Calabasas Road, including the, the site's main entrance of Commons Way. And then there are two entrances on Park Granada. The northernmost is a public entrance, the southernmost is also a public entrance, but it actually accesses a rear area of the site that is utilized more by loading and some employee parking. And then we actually hold a loading easement over that portion of the road, and it's a fire, it's a fire lane, and so we have easements for those two items. And the existing parking on site currently is about 1,059 spaces. 600, 968 of those spaces are north of development that exists out there today. And the rear area is home to 91 parking spaces. So there's several requests, and the mayor read through them, so I'll go through them just real quickly. Site plan reviews, basically for the demo and the reconstruction. Condition use permits are three. One is for a site-specific amendment to the existing master CUP. Then there's a request for a new implementing CUP as drafted in your packet for the entire Commons property. And then a request for alcohol sales for five new restaurant and/or retail spaces. The property is located in a scenic corridor, so requires scenic corridor permit. And the applicant has requested subdivision of parcel B into one ground floor and six airspace parcels for the vertical elements. Has a couple of other requests. One is, like the initial implementing CUP, a shared parking reduction is requested to reduce the commercial parking requirement from the 1,043 that'd be required under our code to 896 spaces as a part of a shared parking analysis, which is a 14.1% reduction. And that is, the 896 is separated from the residential parking spaces. And then, because this project is providing 12 affordable units, it qualifies for the state density bonus law. They're not requesting to take advantage of a density bonus per se. However, they are allowed, if they qualify for that, to request up to one density bonus concession and then waivers of development standards. And they've requested their concession to be a reduction of parking stall dimensions for Building A and a waiver of the city's maximum height requirement of 35 feet to permit a maximum 85-foot-high building for Building A and 46-foot-high building as Building A. Oh, I'm sorry, Building B. So the proposed project is basically demo of the existing theater, and then we're going to construct the two, basically new mixed buildings. They're termed Building A and Building B. Building B is more of a complex of buildings. But the total area is 210,921 square feet. Includes 119 residential apartments, which includes the 12 affordable I just mentioned. 24,163 square feet of new restaurant retail area, which is actually a net reduction with the demolition of the theater of 8,928 square feet. Includes two new public plazas. It involves a Main Street concept with street-facing commercial space and enhanced streetscape along with that and some landscaping. To kind of hone in on each building specifically, so Building A is the one on the south. It's the bigger of the two buildings. It'll be sited mostly within the footprint of the theater and will have 101 of the 119 units, which includes all 12 of the affordable units. It'll have one new retail space, 2,033 square feet, essentially where the marquee is right now. It consists of three parking floors. One will be subterranean, one ground floor, and one stacked on top of that, the second level. Those will be exclusive for the residents, and they will accommodate 225 cars and 112 bicycles. It'll have five residential floors above the parking with a mix of one, two, and three bedroom units. It also included a rooftop community space with pool landscaping and seating areas and some other amenities I'll show you in a second. Rooftop gym and workroom will be part of that. And the rooftop amenity space is essentially at about 75 feet above grade as how the code, city's code measures height. However, it will have the gym element that will go up to 85 feet in height at its highest point. And here's a close-up of the rooftop level, so you can see the amenities are on there. And that is the pool, spa, landscaping, bar, seating areas, fire table, bocce court, and some mechanical areas that are screened for some mechanical equipment. And then this area highlighted in red is the enclosed gym and workroom space. So this is the area that will extend up to the 85 feet mark. Building B is north of Building A. It's across the main drive aisle. Building B is, consists of the 18 residential apartments. It'll have new 22,000 square foot, 22,130 square feet of retail space on the ground floor. Under that will be a subterranean parking floor exclusively, again, for the residents of that complex, which will accommodate 45 automobiles and 20 bicycles. It's basically comprised of four above-ground buildings, visually, I should say visually above-ground buildings. B's one through B4. And B2 and B4 are really connected by that subterranean parking structure. The tallest point of that complex will be 46 feet high. B1, which is where my cursor is right now, will be a standalone restaurant, about 23 feet tall. Buildings two and three include ground floor commercial space with two floors of residential apartments above, and it's connected by a bridge on the second floor at approximately 43 and 46 feet tall respectively. And Building Four is this one kind of to the northeast of it. And that's going to be a ground floor restaurant space with one floor of residential apartments above at approximately 41 feet high. Building B also consists of pedestrian walkways, enhanced landscaping areas, the two plazas that I mentioned before and a bocce ball court. Here's a rendering of Building A. This is provided by the applicant. This was taken essentially from Civic Center Way, being looking southward. And you can see our Civic Center and the adjacency of Building A next to that. And then the building elevations, just to give you again a sense of Building A. This is the northeast elevation and the west elevation. Here's some elevations of Building B. You kind of see the separated nature of these buildings a little bit more and the positioning of them in front of Building A. So, quick summary of the parking. Basically, the residential component requires 164 spaces by government code. Again, the parking rate's a little different than our code because they qualified for the state density bonus. They provided 270 spaces. So it does meet the state law requirement in this case with 106 extra residential spaces. The commercial component by code would require 1,043 spaces. And I mentioned earlier, they submitted a shared parking analysis. The project itself is proposing 931, but that shared parking analysis has indicated a maximum demand, excuse me, in December of 896 spaces. And so the applicant does have that request for a parking reduction to reduce the requirement down to 896, even though they're proposing 931 spaces at this time. So that requirement is again met via the parking, the shared parking reduction, if it's granted. So in total, the project is proposing 1,201 spaces. At this moment in time, could be as low as 1166 if the parking reduction is granted and the requirement is for 1,060. And so they have more spaces than, than the requirements at this time. So the Planning Commission held two public hearings on October 19th and November 16th. There were many issues of concern that were discussed at the October 19th meeting. And we grouped them into basically the following categories. Green building and landscaping, site planning and design, parking, and another category. In between those meetings, the Planning Commission had asked us to meet with the applicant. And we did and discussed the issues that were, that were brought up and discussed at the meeting. The applicant came back with responses to those, every, every, every one of those issues and actually proposed either a response or, and basically 26 voluntary conditions to address some of those issues that came up, all of which have been incorporated into the draft resolution that's in front of you, which is Attachment A. And so what we as staff did is attach Attachment C. And we're hoping this would be an easy way for you to see what all those issues are, see what the responses were, and see what the end, end status of each issue was ultimately. And so the references to certain conditions hopefully was an E, something that, that made your, your review a little bit easier for that. So again, that's Attachment C of the report. The Planning Commission did vote 5-0 to adopt PC Resolution 2023-780, recommending approval of the project with additional direction that the remaining concerns of the Planning Commission be carried forward for city council consideration. Again, that's what kind of led to Attachment C. And so that's not just the ones that, that are remaining concerns. We actually forwarded all their concerns to you and, and the status of that. The most significant of those concerns, we believe, were in regard to height and architectural style of Building A, parking, and green building standards. style of Building A, parking, and green building standards. Also, as mentioned, there was addendum to the programmatic EIR for the housing element. This project fell into one of the housing sites, and so tiered off of that. Basically, the city's housing element and those related general plan updates considered development of 12 sites. This was Site 11 of that. And the total development for, that was considered under the housing element, was 1,305 new dwelling units and 148,853 square feet of new commercial space, and found there to be no significant unmitigated impact in the EIR. Site 11, this property was, within that analysis, was analyzed for up to 202 residential units and 44,393 square feet of new commercial space. This addendum provided a project-level analysis of the potential environmental impacts and included all the sections that were studied, that are required to be studied: aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural, historical resources, geology and soils, greenhouse gas emissions, hazards, hazardous materials, hydrology, water quality, land use noise, population, housing, public services, traffic, transportation utilities, and wildfire safety and evacuation. The proposed project at a reduced scope of 119 compared to the 202, and the net reduction of commercial space as opposed to the 44,393, unsurprisingly was found to have either the same or lesser impact for all environmental factors as in the programmatic EIR. A couple of other city considerations, and I did a side-by-side, I hope it's visible to you on this. We have a parking area behind the city's library. It's about 10 spaces worth or so. It has the city's loading zone, and I mentioned earlier that this accessway behind the Commons actually has, it's a city easement for our loading space and a fire lane. And so the new configuration of the building, and you can see it circled here on the right-hand side, will impede the access to many of those parking spaces, including our loading zone, which currently is on the northernmost area of that. So, that, the design as it's proposed right now will cause some adjustments to the fire lane and city loading easements and impede access to a majority of those parking spaces, including our loading space. And if this project is approved, then our recommendation is to authorize a city manager to negotiate appropriate reconfiguration of the parking area to allow for a new loading space and appropriate compensation for the loss of parking. So a quick summary, that this site is in the commercial mixed-use zone, which does permit a mix of residential and retail uses. The subject site, as I mentioned, is identified as a priority housing site in the city's housing element and community design elements, and is identified to provide for up to 202 units. The proposed project is eligible to request a density bonus as well as one concession or incentive and waivers for providing the 10% affordable units. And the addendum to the programmatic EIR was prepared that determined no new significant impacts would result from this project that were not already identified and mitigated for in the programmatic EIR. And so our recommended action tonight is either to adopt the resolution that we provided you in draft form 2023-1880 approving the project and associated applications, and if so, to further authorize the city manager to negotiate the appropriate compensation for the voluntary adjustments to the fire lane and the loading easements, as I mentioned earlier, and the loss of parking, or to direct staff to prepare a resolution denying the project and associated applications, which would be considered at a future meeting. This ends my presentation. And as usual, we're available for questions. Just do want to mention that we have a whole team here to help you out tonight, including from our planning department, Jacqueline, Tom is here, and Carolyn Groves, I'm sorry, Carolyn Groves to my right here is from DUDAC and was helping us through the process of review on this project. We also have, from our Public Works Department, Curtis Castle, our new city engineer, Tociana Holden, our deputy public works director, and our traffic consultant, Tom Miracle, all here to my right. And so, we're here for you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that thorough presentation and all the great exhibits we had the pleasure to go through. And that was a nice ending, by the way. There was no music, though. All right. I'm going to look to my colleagues. Do you wish to go ahead with council questions? Of course, there, we have the applicant here, and we also have a stack of public speaker cards. So I will look for your wish. Do you wish to go at this point with questions to staff and comments, or proceed to hear from the public?
I'd rather.
And the applicant, of course.
I'd rather hear from the public first.
Okay, we all good? Good. Just want to make sure we're on the same page. We will go ahead, I have a lot of speaker, public speaker cards. If anyone wishes to speak on this item and you're here, I'm going to ask you to please fill out the card now. Don't wait till the end, please. That's not a fun thing if you're up here. So please fill out a card and give it to our city clerk now, if you're going to speak on this item. If you come in later, obviously that's different, or something comes up. But if you're planning on speaking, please give a speaker card to the city clerk. No question, if you wish to speak, fill out a speaker card and give it to the city clerk, please. And you have up to three minutes. Did you fill out a speaker card? How are we? Tom, oh, I thought you were getting up to speak. Okay, I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could suggest it may be efficient if we allow Ms. Robertson to speak first?
I was going to ask that, yes. I didn't have a card.
Yeah, we're going to get a speaker card for her, for you.
Perfect. I'd like, please proceed. We'll call first upon Ms. Robertson, and if you'll state your name and the city in which you are residing, or who you represent.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. It's wonderful to be here with you tonight. For the record, my name's Chris Robertson. I'm Vice President of Planning and Government and Community Relations with Caruso. I'd like to start by thanking staff for their report and presentation, and all of the hard work that they put into this project to bring us to this important milestone tonight. I'd also like to thank the members of the Architectural Review Panel and the Planning Commission for providing us with great feedback. We've had a number of thoughtful discussions, which ultimately led to a modification in the project design, as well as staff mentioned the incorporation of 26 additional conditions of approval, all of which have been incorporated in the resolution before you. We'd like to stress that although we are at the tail end of this entitlement process, we never stop listening. And as we eventually move into design, we'll continue to take all the feedback that we've received into consideration, in addition to all the feedback that we have yet to receive tonight and after tonight. Look, we are ultimately here because we love this community. Last month, in November, we celebrated our official 25th anniversary. 25 years ago last month, we opened our doors to this community, and we couldn't be more delighted by the way that they've embraced us. 26 years ago, our team stood before the city requesting permission to build the Commons as it exists today. We are incredibly proud of the way that the community has embraced the Commons. We are incredibly proud of the partnerships that we've built with not only the community but the city, and we are just as committed to this community today as we were 26 years ago, if not more so. As we started to think about what the future of the Commons might look like, we made a goal, we set a goal to reach out to as many residents across the city as possible. And to that end, we've sent over 20,000 mailers out to every single resident and business multiple times, inviting them to participate in a series of workshops and listening sessions. We also sent emails out, over 20,000 emails, inviting the community to do the same. We've hosted meetings on property at King's Fish House, on the city's property at Founder's Hall, and the Senior Center. We've hosted countless Zoom sessions, one-on-one coffees, lunches. We've had the opportunity to meet with HOA presidents, HOA board members. We've been invited to participate and present in some of those meetings. We've met with the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce. We've administered surveys, both online and in person, and we've gone through hundreds and hundreds of comment cards that we've received as part of this process. We also had the privilege to meet with a number of community members in their homes who opened their doors to us and invited their friends and neighbors to participate in work sessions that allowed us to engage with the community in a way that we wouldn't have otherwise been able to. The plan that's before you tonight has been crafted by all of that input we've received over the last two years, and we would not be here were it not for the input that the community has provided to us. We want to say thank you to the community. Thank you for taking ownership in the Commons at Calabasas. Thank you for being invested, not only in the future of the Commons but in the city as a whole. We want to say thank you for taking time out of your busy day and nights and weekends when you could have been spending it with your friends and families and instead chose to spend it with us because you care about the Commons so deeply. And for those of you who opened your homes to us and invited us to come in with our projector screens and laptops, thank you from the bottom of our heart. It's been a truly touching process to go through this together. They say that a picture is worth 1,000 words, and we like to think that a moving picture might be worth even more than that. We are incredibly excited to share with you tonight an animation that brings the project to life in a new way. So without further ado, I would ask that we go ahead and roll the special presentation that we put together for you tonight.
There's issues with TVs and the screens that they're working on. Oh, there it goes.
Since we first opened our doors 25 years ago, the Commons at Calabasas has become a beloved gathering place for this one-of-a-kind community.
I come here all the time with my kids, with my family, with my dog. We're always finding somewhere here to have breakfast, grab a coffee.
Who would ever believe that this beautiful, beautiful town center, kind of a community hub, would be built with so many restaurants and shops and wonderful places to come with family and friends? It's just terrific.
Well, my friends and I come to the Commons. We have a lot of fun because there's a lot of interesting things to do here.
I cannot imagine Calabasas without the Commons. It's not only the center of town, but it is Calabasas, I believe.
The city of Calabasas is such a special place. It has a small-town charm that's unlike any other in the area.
When we created the Commons, we poured our heart and soul into it. And I see people appreciating the place and enjoying themselves. It's an immense amount of joy that we take, and especially 25 years later.
We really feel like we've grown up alongside this community. We consider it a privilege to come back now and have a discussion about what's next. What else can we do to enrich the life of this community for generations to come?
At Caruso, we're working to ensure that the Commons flourishes into the future while continuing to meet the needs of the community today. To plan for the future, we always start by listening, drawing on the wisdom of the people who live and work nearby.
When we first designed the Commons, it was heavily influenced by the community. We love the building of beautiful places, but we also want to build a place that the community finds their own.
About a year and a half ago, we went out to the community to get a better understanding of what role the Commons at Calabasas plays in their lives. We wanted to understand what we're doing well and what we can do even better.
The Caruso team has been listening to what the people of Calabasas want and need, and I've been watching that entire process, and I've been very impressed.
For the future of the Commons, I would love a wider variety of restaurants, places to go with your friends, maybe a new coffee shop, more boutique shopping.
My parents' generation, they used to go to the movies a lot, but now with streaming, me and my friends, we find ourselves just going home and streaming movies.
But I can't wait for movies in the park.
I am very much looking forward to more shops, more restaurants, and a green space for my young kids to hang out and have somewhere to play while mom and dad are finishing up
The Commons Lane is a thoughtful reimagining of the Commons to include curated new shops and restaurants and inviting outdoor dining spaces along a charming paseo. The Commons Lane will also offer elegant apartment homes located between ground-floor shops and the hillside, substantially set back from restaurants, shops, and the nearby Designed with Calabasas in mind, the residences will beautifully complement the welcoming ambiance of the Commons Lane. The new plan will preserve the small-town feel and walkable atmosphere that Calabasas residents have come to love, retaining the enchanting open-space plazas that serve as gathering places for family and friends. It will create an exquisite new destination that enhances the Commons of today. The new residences at the Commons Lane will be perfect for families, for seniors wishing to downsize, or for young people who have grown up in Calabasas and wish to come back, making the Commons Lane their home. These elegant apartment homes will allow residents to enjoy all that makes Calabasas unique, while providing convenient access to the shops, restaurants, and amenities the Commons is known for.
As an option in our future, we would definitely love to live here. And just be able to wake up in the morning, go grab our cup of coffee, do our local marketing, and in the evening just stroll and have a wonderful dinner, all fresco at the new Commons Lane.
I'd love to be able to live at the Commons after I come back from college.
You know, everybody's around you, all your friends, all these shops, grocery stores. I think it's a great place to live.
Wake up in the morning, come grab your coffee from one of those beautiful coffee shops or restaurants, walk with your dog, just enjoy the beautiful environment and weather. This is our community.
The Commons Lane is intentionally designed to fit seamlessly next to the Calabasas Civic Center, and will include architectural stepbacks and terracing to allow these two community destinations to stand comfortably side by side. Since we first opened, guests have observed that visiting the Commons is like traveling to a different place and time. The Commons Lane will extend that experience, featuring the thoughtful touches and signature accents that Caruso is known for. It's a graceful and elegant improvement for the next 25 years and beyond.
We pride ourselves on taking care of 1,000 details, everything from the height of the curb to the width of the sidewalk, the rhythm of the street trees, the spacing of the light bulbs. It adds up to a whole that I don't think anybody else can do.
The Commons Lane includes wide sidewalks and pedestrian passeos that connect shops, restaurants, and open plazas, creating a comfortable downtown feeling reminiscent of quaint European market squares. Flowers, trees, and landscaping will add to the vibrant Main Street experience for the community. The family-friendly green space will be perfect for movies in the park, meeting friends, or enjoying community gatherings and celebrations. It's just one feature that will make living in Calabasas even better.
I think I speak for a lot of my friends that we cannot wait for the Commons Lane.
We're very excited for the new changes coming to the Commons.
I'm so excited for the Commons Lane, and I cannot wait for it all to come together.
It's going to be beautiful.
Caruso's going to do a great job with this. We've been waiting for the Commons Lane, and we're ready to go.
I'm so excited for the Commons Lane.
Super excited.
We are ready for this.
Now's the time.
Let's do this.
We're ready.
Absolutely.
I think it's going to be awesome.
All right, thank you. Now we are on to public comment. I don't have any additional speaker cards, but if anyone wishes to speak, final call, can you please pass that forward or hand it to the city clerk? Thank you. I'm going to start out, we'll start out, and again, please state your name and where you reside. Sherry Zerit, and if I'm getting the name wrong, I apologize, hard to read. Sherry Zerit first. Sherry Zerret, first. These are not... That's an honor to be first. That's what I was told.
All these cards, and I put mine in last, and now I'm first. Z is supposed to be for last.
I give you Z best and first. Please, welcome.
I'm Sherry Zerret. I live in Calabasas Hills for the last 31 years. And I was... I'm gonna read what I actually had written to the council yesterday. And basically, this gives you an idea of my concerns about this project and the density of the project. So I'll just read what I have. I said, "I have lived in Calabasas since 1991 and have watched us grow into one of the most desired areas in Los Angeles to live and raise our families. I was here when Mr. Caruso proposed this plan for the Commons. Our community fought hard to keep the center from having office buildings and a 12-plex movie theater on the property, and concessions were made in our beautiful Commons is the result. I do feel strongly that the Commons needs to be renovated and needs a facelift, but the proposed plans for adding over 100 apartments and second-floor residences above the retail space is not in the best interest of our community, taking a good, hard look at the impact of our already congested commercial and retail space. Another huge concern is the additional impending traffic impact on the freeway area between Valley Circle Boulevard or Mulholland Drive, as we know it, and Parkway Calabasas, and the egress and ingress of the Commons and the surrounding area. In an emergency evacuation, I fear it would be disastrous for all us living in our area. Just recently, a water main broke on the Parkway near the golf course, and families were stranded from each other for hours, not to mention previous fire danger evacuations. In my opinion, the density plan is way too much for this area. Calabasas has become another Beverly Hills, bringing with it a stream of problems that we are all too familiar with lately. It is my sincere hope that the city council, who has protected us from overbuilding in the past, will come up with acceptable solutions to keep our community safe in addition to being financially stable for all concerned."
Thank you, Sherry. Thank you very much. Amanda Weiss, Amanda Weiss followed by Dory Kramer. Amanda Weiss. Last call. Oh, there she is. Saw you in the video. Dory Kramer, following.
Hi, city council members. My name is Amanda Weiss, and I am a resident of Calabasas. I grew up here and decided to come back and raise my family here. The Commons is one of the special places in Calabasas that my family and I like to come to. We love to walk around, get ice cream, and enjoy all the scenery, the flowers, and the beautiful places to sit down. I'm thrilled Caruso wants to improve the Commons for the future to make it even better place for us to visit as our kids grow older. The plan will also help increase tax revenue for Calabasas to help with crucial services like funding our schools, parks, libraries, and first responders. I believe Caruso has earned our support, has listened to all of us, and I hope you will support the Commons as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Dory Kramer, followed by Hooman Karashi. And if I have that wrong, I apologize.
Hi. We've lived in Calabasas for over almost 30 years. And about two years ago, my husband and I had the opportunity to decide if we're gonna stay here or not. We did. We moved to a smaller house that's one story. We're very grateful that we're here. We love the community, the wonderful sidewalks. There's no comparison to anyplace else in LA County with sidewalks and the ambiance. And my concern really is parking as we grow older. A lot of us are in that category. I don't want a situation that I drive over to park my car to go grocery shopping and I have to wait a half an hour to park my car. And the same is true for the Civic Center. When we want to start using the senior center, where are we gonna park our cars now that they're taking away these places, smart parking spaces? And I hear that you're aware of that, and that circle was shown, that they're gonna be working on that circle to figure out how we're gonna park to be able to come to the Civic Plaza. So please consider keeping as many parking spaces as you possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Hooman Karashi, followed by Patty Goldberg. And welcome. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Hooman Karashi. I'm a resident of Calabasas since 2006, and I'm in favor of Caruso's plan to enhance the Commons. I think it's a great plan. I'd love to see it approved. I attended several of the community meetings that he held while developing the plan. And yeah, that's brief. I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Goldberg, followed by Casey Napolitano and Jennifer Winchell. Sounds like a tag team there.
Mayor, member of the council members. I'm here today. I sent you an email, which I hope you've read, and I really represent quite a few people. I think it's shocking to realize how little most people know about what is proposed and that today, a lot of what we've seen is unknown. So I just want to voice that I think basically this is too rushed. I think that while it was... There's been several hearings that most people aren't aware of it. Some of the things that we're seeing in the documents, most people have not seen. And I think you really need to consider, have you received input from the community members? Additionally, a lot of the requirements, such as story pulls and notifications, really have not been set forth properly. I think the story pull, most people, if you look around and go in the parking lot, they don't even know where they are. And so I think it's going to be a shock to the community. I'm supportive of Caruso. He has done a beautiful job in our community. I think that what we need to do is spend just a little more time listening to what people want. I think we need to focus on the community attributes that we have learned to savor and appreciate, and we need more of them. When I see what's up there today, again, it looks like an advertisement. It doesn't really show what it is that we can expect to see. So I just want to tell you I'm here today not to contest it, but because I care about the community. I know you do, too. I care about the fact that my family has been here. We've had a lot of wonderful times here. We have the theater, which is going to be gone. What is the community going to look like after that? What is the community open space going to look like? Please consider giving us a little more information, a little more time, so that people are not upset when they see the angle that we are not seeing in the advertisements there, which show the looming buildings. So I know that you, like me and my family, we all care about the city. We need more public input, and we need to hear some ideas. And because of that, please, let's just have a little more time and clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey Napolitano and Jennifer Winchell, followed by Pamela Mederos. And again, if someone wishes to speak, please make sure the city clerk has your card now. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Casey Napolitano, and this is my mom, Jennifer Winchell. I remember when I was in kindergarten, and she said, "Hey, we're moving to Calabasas." And I was like, "What is that?" And we moved here, and there was no Commons. There was just a Ralph's, pretty much, in Sagebrush, of course. And so we've been residents for over 30 years, and over the years, I've seen a little bit of change, but not much. And I think that Calabasas deserves an evolution, just like every amazing city or area in Los Angeles. I remember when the Commons first opened, and it was so exciting and amazing, and that was 20 years ago, now or more. And now it's time to make it better than ever. Like many of my fellow residents, our family enjoys hanging out at the Commons quite often, pretty much three to five times a week, I would say. We would love to see the restaurants expanded and more green space, like they were talking about. And I know that as a city, we have to have more housing, and I like the idea of Caruso being in charge of that and putting it in place where it's not disturbing anything, any natural space. In closing, it is time for Calabasas to evolve, and there's no better company to make sure it is done correctly other than Caruso.
Thank you. Pamela Mederos, followed by Susan Salo. And again, please let us know.
I'm Pamela.
Yes.
I'm Susan.
And we are residents of Calabasas. However, I'm a little late to the party here.
I've been here since 1976.
And I'm very shocked at how big this project is, and I just found out about it. So I would like to know if there's a possible chance to have another meeting where we can ask questions, because I have a lot of questions. And previous... One of the previous speakers brought up a lot of our concerns. You know, I can't even imagine the traffic that would impact all of us, just going to Ralph's or just going to the theater. The traffic, when you add 100 houses and residents, where are they gonna go? You can't widen the streets. You know, okay, you're gonna build an underground parking, but you're limiting the parking as well. It says you're limiting extra parking spaces.
And you know, also, the charm of what Caruso did bring us, that's, you know, to be lauded, of course. And we respect that. And I certainly remember when I used to do my jogging, and there was nothing where the Commons was, you know, there's fields. And now, you know, this beautiful, charming, charming town.
Yeah, the ambiance would be different, completely different.
The whole face would change, and that's very sad. We're then becoming urban. You know, we're not that charming place anymore. I realize that, as Ed Albrecht mentioned, that there's a law about housing that has to be provided. All I'm saying, and I've talked to a few of the other residents, is that perhaps there could be another space other than infringing on the charm of the Commons. There's, you know, other land, other place, whatever, that could be used. And also, as one of the other residents said, let's have a little bit more time to really think this out. We feel kind of rushed into it, and it's very nice to have a commercial, a Caruso commercial, but that does not say what the reality is. And I would appreciate, as some of us who are opposed to this, if we could have a bit more time. Anything else, darling?
Yeah, we just have questions, like, why are we demolishing the theater? What's the point? Is it not making money? What's the point?
That's culture. That's culture, but we're taking it away, and who's gonna wanna sit outside and watch? Everybody doesn't wanna sit outside and watch a movie. We love a theater. We want it. We were at Spotlight the Arts. We tried to have a theater here. I don't know if you remember, Mayor, Mr. Mayor. And we were going, "We need more theater. Oh, time's up."
Thank you. You're great.
But anyway.
Thank you.
Okay. That's what we have to say.
These tag teams are very good, though. They're entertaining. Thank you both.
We just wanted to know if everything is gonna remain the same, or...
We need to... Yeah. Thank you. Next, Linda Perry. I believe she had to leave, okay, unfortunately. All right. Brad Hirsch, followed by R.L. Embry.
Good evening, city council. Mayor Shapiro. As a resident of... Brad Hirsch from Westridge, just up the street. As a board member, I speak for myself. As a resident for Calabasas for over 25 years, I've seen the development of the Commons from the beginning. I understand the fears from the community as they were back 25 years ago, and I think it all certainly worked out for the best. I'm proud of it and delighted for the new addition, and I support the Commons Lane. Thank you.
Thank you. R.L. Embry, followed by Iris Stone.
I think you're definitely taking him out of order, but I wanted to say...
What's your name? Where city you're from?
Ryan Embry from Calabasas.
Start with that. Thank you.
What people are all saying they like and love about the Commons is what it is now and what it's been. And what it is, is a level of intensification and a level of density that works for the city. That's not what we just watched and was proposed before you. Adding all of the housing element would create a 24-hour-a-day hubbub there. Increases demand on public services. I said the town never goes to sleep. There were some proposals in there for parking and this idea that you get smaller, compact spaces for the residents. No, they need to be full-size because they need to be equipped or allow them to be converted to electric charging stations for each vehicle. As the vehicle sleeps overnight, it should charge, not far out in the parking lot with a fast charge in the daytime. I was over there October 13th, the evening of the robbery, and I couldn't find any place to park anywhere. I drove back and forth all the way over to Pickup Sticks, and had to go all the way back over to the other side just to get out and find out what the heck was going on. So it's already reached its parking capacity as it is. And if there was more residential added, you need to increase the amount of guest parking for the residential component. Not everybody would come to shop. They'd come to visit proposed residents. The parking is a really big deal-breaker, and no compact parking. It's against the city code, and it doesn't work for electric vehicles that are parked with some cord hanging out one side or the other side, or if they chose to back in, now you can't walk between the vehicles. It creates an evacuation and fire hazard. Thank you.
Thank you. Iris Stone, followed by Patrick McGinnis. J. Patrick McGinnis.
Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Iris Stone. I'm a resident and a business owner in Calabasas, and I am a supporter of the Commons Lane. The Caruso team has shown us extensively that they care about our community over their 25-year history in Calabasas. I think their plan will integrate well with the Commons of today while providing more of what residents, many of whom are my friends, are looking for in terms of shopping and dining options. I also believe that the Caruso team cares, and they're going to listen and take our safety and transit concerns in mind. So I urge you to vote to approve the plan before you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. J. Patrick McGinnis, followed by Randy Phyllis.
Greetings from the limby capital of the world, Malibu. And my son did go to Calabasas High. I think this program is fantastic. We have no theater in Malibu, but we have hundreds of actors and actresses. You talk about traveling, come to Malibu and do it again. From Sabre, I said, "Come on, throw up." Everybody wants housing, but nobody wants it in their neighborhood. I think they've done a fantastic job. Everyone's there shopping centers. They're wonderful. So if somebody wants to complain, move to Watts, move to East LA, move to West Covina. This is a lovely town, and your city council doesn't come to fight every meeting they have, like they do in Malibu. In paradise, a trailer show for $5 million, and it's on a month-to-month list. Stop complaining and throw up.
All right. Randy Phyllis. I'm not saying much so far, one sec, about applauding or anything. I don't want either anyone in here to feel uncomfortable, no matter what they're saying. So let's respect everybody and maybe cut the applause for now until we're all done. Please. I'll ask that as a favor. Randy, welcome, followed by Elise Bakas. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Shapiro and council members. My name is Randy Phyllis. I am a Calabasas resident since 1992, so that makes it 31 years. I remember back in, probably about 27 years ago, we went through a bunch of meetings when Kilroy was supposed to take that land, and it became Caruso, and we were all overjoyed...
because we had some familiarity with the Encino Marketplace, with the Westlake Promenade, and what a spectacular place it's been. I am in support of Commons Lane. I was at the 25 year, it's been 25 years, I was at the Commons grand opening party. I even found my name badge from 25 years ago to celebrate this. Rick Lemo will like this. I like the fact that they're not going to cut into the mountain. They're not going to cut into our open space. They're going to preserve our open space, which is very important because that's where our local wildlife lives, that's where our local ecosystem is, and that's what Calabasas Open Space is. So I applaud them for not cutting into the mountain and I support the project.
Thank you. Elise Bakas followed by Rocco and Jerry Calabrese, or Calabreci.
Good evening. My name is Elise Bakas. I'm a 25-year resident of the city. I moved here the same, I think the Commons opened within a month. And I was trying to figure out, has it been 1,000 times I've been here? Has it been 1,500 times I've been here? It has been part of our lives. I brought up my son here and now I bring my grandkids here. I am very much looking forward to having more choices in restaurants, shopping. I think that the, the video was extremely inspiring. I thought it was beautiful. And this is, I can picture myself wandering those paseos and holding hands with my grandkids and taking them for ice cream. And I think that the Caruso company really cares about their projects and they will not let us down. It will be beautiful and it will be increasing our property values and I am very proud to support this project.
Thank you. Rocco and Jerry Calabrese and followed by Barry Harari. And if I get names wrong, please correct me.
You did perfectly well, Mayor. My name is Rocco Calabrese and this is my wife, Jerry. We've been Calabasas residents for an excess of 25 years. And in that time, we have lived at three, in three different communities. We're currently residing at Avanti, right up the street. Caruso has shown over the past 25 years that they are very valuable and trusted partners in our community. I believe the plan looks wonderful and we're excited to see it take shape. We also believe it will improve our property values and enhance our city as a whole. As residents and constituents, we sincerely hope you will vote yes this evening. Thank you for your service to Calabasas.
Thank you. Barry Harari followed by Daniel Rastine.
I'm Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Protem, City Council. Thank you for listening to me. My name is Barry Harari. My wife, Galit, and I moved here in 96, almost 29, whatever many years ago that was, 27 years ago. We were actually in attendance at the grand opening party for the Commons way back when and to look back very fondly on a lifetime spent in this community as adults raising children here, sending them to the local schools. And I'd just like to take a moment just to share a few thoughts that I have that are generally in support of the project as it is shown in the presentation and what's been deliberated publicly over the last year and a half to two years that Caruso has gone to such a great extent to, to discuss with the public at large. I think that the first golden rule in real estate is that real estate always must and always ultimately ends up going to its best and highest use. And I think also that one of the greatest concerns when it comes to developing in real estate is that it's imperative to truly get it right the first time. Because to tear something down and to redo it is certainly not very appetizing considering costs today and the hardships that are associated with that. With that said, I don't think that there is a organization that is more committed and a better steward of these, of marshaling these resources and implementing these development plans to enhance our neighborhood than Caruso. I think any and every resident of the community that's here tonight certainly will never, ever complain of the soaring and skyrocketing equity in their homes that they've enjoyed over the last 20, 25 years. I know I've stood patiently and quietly while there are plenty of detractors mumbling in front of me, talking about, oh my goodness, this and oh my goodness, that, and the sky is falling here and there. But they're all loving the fact that this community doesn't even closely resemble today what it was when they first moved in here. And the beautiful job that the city has done with these facilities, with these chambers, with the wonderful library and the senior center, and then of course, what Caruso has done, I think deserves our faith in their ability to go ahead and to usher in the Commons Lane project, which will hopefully safeguard the community and provide something of even greater value for the next 25 years. Parking is a concern and I believe very faithfully in this chamber's abilities to work with Caruso to mitigate any measures. And I think we also need to look as a society about perhaps maybe we need to have a bit more public transport within the confines of the community to have people shuttling back and forth to the Commons and not relying so much on cars that require this parking. So thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Daniel Rastine followed by Frank Isaac.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Council. My name is Daniel Rastine. I lived in Calabasas for about 18 years. Moved here and bought a house purely to be close to the Commons. Started a family because of the school district purely around the Commons. It was the center of the community, which, there's a reason why we moved here, it's for that reason. The Caruso team has invited, you know, they sent mailers and emails and I went to those meetings. And I, I loved the fact that they listened. They invited everyone. I went because I liked the community. And they even came to my house on a Friday night. You know, my whole block came because I'm involved in the community, I know all my neighbors, I don't just keep to myself. The whole block came over to our house and they listened to every single person. It went quite late, actually. There was wine involved, it was important. But I just wanted to, I'm very much for this project. The reason is, I want to go sort of off-script, if I may. This is just, you know, coming from the heart. I've followed the Caruso team and the project they do because I, I think they're beautiful, from the Grove to Westlake, everything. But they're entertainment centers. They're not a mall. They're entertainment centers and that's the model. And with regards to the Commons, I've been here 18 years. You know, I'm sort of getting a little bit bored. A lot of my neighbors have moved. They're going to Ventura County, they're going to other places for dinner, to, to bars and whatnot, to stores. So what I'm trying to say is if it doesn't keep up in competition with other cities, we're going to lose people. And that's revenue. So we need to be competitive with other cities and we need to keep up with the times, if you may, and, and just entertain and provide a better quality of life for everyone. Because I'm very sad to say, I might move also if things don't change. I like, I like to entertain. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Isaac followed by Sean Bernhold.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor Protem, and distinguished council members. You're distinguished because you have a difficult job to do considering projects like this. I think the speakers who have preceded me have done a really fine job of presenting some of the pros and cons, positives and negatives of this project. Any project of this magnitude requires this kind of discourse, this sort of consideration. I am Frank Isaac. I have been a resident of Calabasas since 1997. I remember driving down Old Calabasas Road before the groundbreaking. And I looked at this heap of dirt and I said to myself, how in the world is this going to get done in order to open up in November of 1998? Well, the team from Caruso found a way to get it done. And for the last 25 years, 26 years, we have enjoyed the Commons together. We've enjoyed this city council chambers. Or would you prefer to be back on Murrow Road? Well, I am here as a direct result of the outreach of the Caruso team. And by that I mean, I did not know them, they did not know me. Like the previous speaker, they came into my neighborhood and they introduced the project to us. And they did so very proactively. And I have seen them since then be very proactive in the manner in which they have continued their outreach to the community. And I believe that this meeting in itself is going to be used by them as fact-finding to address the concerns that we've shared here tonight. And I have complete confidence in the Caruso team in conjunction with the Fine Planning Commission and the government of this amazing city to get it done again. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Sean Bernhold followed by Annette Kardish and Rachel Tabak. So we have a tag team coming up again.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Sean Berenholt. I've been living in Calabasas for about seven years. But I've lived in many communities and around Southern California, Newport Beach, LA, Westside. Caruso brings a certain class and style to centers across Southern California. And as part of living in here since 2016, we know the Caruso team. We know what they can deliver. If anyone else was going to do an expansion here in Calabasas, I'm sure many residents here would be concerned. But because it's Caruso, we know they're dependable, they're reliable, and their quality of their product will be great. They've been talking to the community for quite a while. They reached out to me on social media. And I believe the Commons Lane will be a wonderful enhancement to the Commons and please support this project.
Thank you. Annette Kardish and Rachel Tabak followed by Dennis Washburn.
Good evening, City Council members. I'm Rachel Tabak and I'm here with my mom, Annette Kardish. We moved to Calabasas in 1989 and grew up in Vista Point. From my entire family, from my parents and my children, we love the Commons. We've had so many memories here and we're in full support of the Commons. Thank you so much.
I would just add that before the 25 years where Caruso started this, there was a lot of skepticism. And then, everybody now is absolutely thrilled and loves it. And I'm sure this new project is going to add to it and we are fully in support of it.
Thank you very much. Dennis Washburn followed by Dennis Warner, two Dennis's.
And as Mr. Washburn comes up, I'll remind him as a planning commissioner that be cautious in your comments as the matter may return to the planning commission. Thank you.
No, Dennis Washburn first. Thank you. Two Dennis's back to back, similar names. Thank you.
Don't be afraid of the bags. I'm not a bag man. I wanted to make, well, first off, I'm Dennis Washburn. I've been here since 1971 and very involved with the community of Calabasas, including this $50 million asset that we have here in the center of our city. And it's important that we recognize the process that we're in and that's what we're doing here right now. But I wanted to start with some really great news that was discovered by the chairman of our planning commission. The headline is, "This California City Has The Most Envied Lifestyle In America." And it's a survey by the moving feedback organization commissioned by Fox News so they could talk about the real estate in this, this community. But it says basically, when it comes down to the most envied lifestyles in America, apparently one California city tops the list. Calabasas ranked first among the top 175 most envied suburban lifestyles in the country according to this national survey, survey by Moving Feedback. I won't do other than suggest that you should all go and take a look at that survey. It's really cool. We're number one. There's a city in Florida that's number two. Beverly Hills is 19. Newport Beach is 20. Irvine, 26. Rancho Palos Rosario is 27. Atherton, 45. La Jolla, 64. Rancho San Jose, 67. All the way down to Saratoga, 97. It's a credit to everybody that's in this room that we're seen as the brand that we've created, which is a great lifestyle. It's enviable. And a lot of it's in response to the organizations that we have grown up with here in our 32 years. And it's important, I think, to acknowledge that we're all in process here. We're working hard to make sure that for the next 25 years, you know, not just the 25 that have gotten us here with Caruso or the 32 years of, of our hard work, to make this an enviable place to live and deal with the equity in our homes and everything else. Now, that's the good news. This job is really hard. The council has to deal with the resolution that we sent to them, which is, in a way, it's yes, an approval, but it's actually sent to you by law because we have to make a decision on what we can do at the planning commission level. And then ultimately, it goes to the council to deal with the things that we can't address. I would like another 30 seconds, if you wouldn't mind. Or if you don't do that, I'm, I'll end my remarks. The bags are full of the research that I've done in 32 years that is made available now for the record in your decision tonight. And I'm hoping that we'll have another meeting and opportunity to open some of that stuff and talk about what it's going to do to help our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dennis.
I'm going to leave the bags there.
Leave, leave them, actually, why don't you give it to the city clerk? Marty will get it. One sec, Dennis, no, Dennis. Yeah. And Dennis Warner followed by Marty Fadai unless he had left, I believe. Welcome, Dennis. And thank you, Dennis.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Dennis Warner and I have lived in Calabasas since 1994. Let me begin by saying that since 1998, the Common Shopping Center has become the single best addition to our community. More often than not, I generally run into old neighbors, friends, and kids my family grew up with. It's a community hub and it's the heartbeat of our community. If there's anyone we can count on to improve the Commons, it's Rick Caruso and his talented team. When I travel within California, people frequently ask where I live. Often and subsequently, they mention, often and subsequently, they mention the Commons when I tell them I live in Calabasas. Whether it's La La Land or Porta Via, people are in, are in the know about Caruso Shopping Centers and are very impressed. The shopping center, along with the famous reality TV family, which I won't mention because they get enough press as is, put Calabasas on the map. Now it's time for a refresher and the Caruso team is the right team to do that. This proposal has been designed, has been designed by many of the same people who designed the original Commons. Caruso affiliated is the only team I would trust to get this done correctly. And I believe this is the right team and the right time for that. As a managing partner in a shopping center in Boise, Idaho, I feel that my experiences validate my belief in the Caruso plan. I'm fully convinced that this will be better than good for our community and our residents will greatly benefit. Off-script, I want to mention one thing. Back when the Commons initially opened, we had the Edward Cinema, which was firing on all eight cylinders. That's back when the movie business was big and you'd come here on a Friday, Saturday night and this place was bustling. And at the time, the shopping center handled the And at the time, the shopping center handled the traffic. It handled the parking. Everybody dealt with it. We found parking spots. We enjoyed ourselves. Now, even though there is a movie theater, they hardly draw any business. The industry's dead. And with the exception of certain times on the weekends, generally, the parking is not a problem now. And therefore, I think it'll be close to awash once they get a full development and get everything built out. I can't see it being a major issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Fadai, followed by Robert Kloss and Amy Kloss. I think Robert and Amy are up.
Marty left, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, followed by Nicole Sproul.
And then can we take a break?
We have, like, three cards. Wait.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. I'm Robert Kloss, and this is my beautiful wife, Amy. We've lived in our wonderful city of Calabasas for many years, and are strong supporters in favor of the Caruso's group plan for the Commons Lane project. The Commons at Calabasas is one of our foundations of the local community. We're both thrilled Caruso is proposing to update the Commons at Calabasas, so it keeps up with today's era. Amy and I are among many of the residents who've had the opportunity to speak with the Caruso team during their many community meetings. They got to know us, and we got to know them. We've had lots of wonderful times at the Commons at Calabasas with all of our family and friends, and we're really excited for even more great times for many years ahead. And we urge you to vote in favor of the Commons Lane project. Thank you for all your dedicated service to our outstanding city of Calabasas and our local community, and happy holidays.
Thank you very much. Before I go, we have four, five more cards. Are we good with that, before we take a break, Council? Okay, good. Very good. Thank you. Nicole Sproul, followed by Sandra and Tom Hamilton. Or Sandra and Tom Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council members and community. My name is Nicole, and I reside here in Calabasas. I'll be speaking from my perspective as a young professional and resident, trying to make my way in this new world, and with all the housing unavailability as well. But I'm also gonna be speaking from other generations that are close to me. My family has been here in Calabasas since 1975. It was actually Greater Mulwood that they're in before it was annexed. Regardless, my family has been here for forty-eight years, since we're all keeping score, up the hill from the Bird Streets, almost double the amount of time that the Commons has even been around. So as you can imagine, I have been witness to these type of debates over time at the dinner table, and that's what it feels like here tonight, which is great. So thank you for everyone on both sides. My late uncle, Commissioner Robert Zacon, worked in the Los Angeles courts here... Los Angeles courts, and he commuted and always stayed in Calabasas, as he loves it very much. By virtue of his line of work, he was a measured and thoughtful person, and I think the sentiments that I've reached personally after thinking it over, researching, and discussing with different people, that it would honor his values. Caruso has done a great job of community outreach, visiting communities, events. I actually met Blake through a nonprofit I've been volunteering with here that recently held an event. I've been seeing all of the information available online and at the various A-frame stands in the Commons, because I'm always there and I enjoy it just as much as we all do. I love the people here and finding ways to get to know them. And this is gonna sound odd, but I'm a walker. I don't drive if I don't have to. I will walk, I will cycle. You'll see me at Peddler's Fork for the betterment of my health and environment. I don't have kids yet, so I don't... I make my friends at the restaurants, shops, and local events in the area. Walkability is key. I spent my formative... I'm still forming my words. Formative years in Toronto, Ontario, Canada. And that's a wonderful place that has done a great job with a sense of community and multiculturalism. I know having residences on-site isn't a panacea for the traffic flow, but please do keep that in mind, as walkability and community like Toronto, I know it's not the same here. I mean, I would just stay in the Commons all the time if I lived there. So, for me as well, I'm looking forward to my friends from Santa Monica and West Hollywood and all the cool areas coming up to see me in my area for once, instead of saying Calabasas is a sleepy town with snobby people that keep to themselves. I get it. I've enjoyed going to Regency, but even Barbie didn't have a packed house when I was going there. My aunt, who I'm currently living with here and caregiving for, is recently widowed, aging, and needs to downsize. A longtime family friend in Calabasas, living off the lake, finds herself in a similar situation. She's thinking of moving to Thousand Oaks, to a smaller place with more amenities and a greater sense of community. She's torn, she loves Calabasas. I will wrap up by just saying they enjoy seeing life around here, and seniors downsizing are in support of that, that are close to me as well. So, thank you very much, and I vote in favor, or ask you to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra and Tom Hamilton, followed by Gary Byrne.
Good to see you again. We're back. I'm Tom Hamilton. This is my mom, Sandra Hamilton. We're longtime residents. What is it, like, twenty-six years or something?
Twenty-six.
Yeah, we love the Commons. We love everything that it's brought to us. I grew up there. As I said last time, I was raised on Rick Caruso, and I really feel that sentiment entirely. And I just wanna say, we're fully aware of what this plan entails, and it's been made so clear to us by the great Caruso team, that we've dealt with now for, what is it, two years? We've been going back and forth with what this all entails and what it's gonna bring to the city, and we're totally in favor of it, and full support. And what else? We'd like to fast-track it, actually. We'd like to get a petition going to fast-track it, because we wanna go next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, please. Thumbs up.
Thank you. Thank you. Gary Burns, followed by Charlotte. Are you passing tonight? You wish to speak, or no?
I wish to speak.
Oh, okay. Followed by Charlotte Meyer.
Good evening, Council members. Most of you know me. I'm one year yesterday elected official for Los Virginies Water District. So it's been an interesting time. I know the problems that you face in trying to make these decisions. It's not easy. And I will tell you that anybody who thinks that it's easy to run for election, serve, and spend your time trying to make these decisions, try to do it yourselves. It won't be simple. I will say that I've gone to Americana, I've gone to the Palisades. I grew up in New York City and a good portion in Florida. There are groups in Oka Raton called Meisner Park, and it really reminds me of what Calabasas is. It's a center that you go to, it's very green, and there are apartments all around. And there are people that come down, and they take part in the activities. I actually think that the apartments are gonna add, although they may be people living there twenty-four hours, it's probably safe. And I feel that those people will meander about, and that the Commons will become even more usable and not close down at ten o'clock at night. I am concerned about the parking, and I wish there was a way to maybe make an overpass to the other side of the Calabasas Road. But I think that it's gonna be very positive, and I think you have a big decision to make and decide how it is that you work with, the different things that you've heard tonight. And I think it's fantastic that those of us who've lived here, I've been here, when I moved, it was Woodland Hills. And then it became Calabasas in ninety-one, and nobody back east understood how I didn't change addresses, but my city changed. So, I love going down there. I know I go to breakfast often. I meet business people at Starbucks when there isn't a car crashing into it. And I think you're gonna make the right decision. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Charlotte Meyer, followed by Daryl Abrams.
I'm Charlotte Meyer. I moved to Calabasas about thirty years ago. It was the year that the city was actually incorporated, and I've never looked back. I love the city of Calabasas. It's given me many opportunities to participate and help grow the government in a way that's responsive to our citizens. I've had the opportunity to serve on the school board for eight years, the Calabasas Park Homage Association as a director, the Senior Center Task Force for three years, and the Advisory Board of the Senior Center for eight and a half years. Tonight, I'm speaking as a private citizen, although I am a member of the Parks Recreation and Education Commission. I love the opportunity that the city gives its residents to have an opinion and to voice it, and tonight I have an opinion. My daughter was the Vice President of Marketing for the landscaping company that helped design the hardscape and the landscape of the Commons and all of these Caruso shopping centers. As an attentive mother, I followed her career. I visited all of her developments as they were being built and after many, many times to see how they've been maintained. I can speak firsthand, I've seen it myself, how the Caruso maintains its properties. One year at the Americana, the lawn needed to be replaced, a huge lawn, almost the size of half a football field. And she called me and she said, "You're not gonna believe this, but the lawn is being replaced." I said, "Wow, that must have been a big expense." She says, "That's the way they do it." I can also say that when I drive around or walk around the Commons, I see the trashcans being polished. And that may sound extreme, but that's the sense of pride that the Caruso company does I have seen the projects firsthand, and I can testify that they are wonderful, and I support the construction, the reconstruction, the facelifting, whatever we're gonna call it, of the Commons, and I urge you to support it as well. Thank you.
Your audience, Delaney Grayson, Amy Grayson, and Joshua. I extend my sincere gratitude for your dedicated service. As a member of the HOA in my community, I emphasize with the weight decisions you navigate. My name is Daryl Abrams, a devoted local resident and proud Maltate asker, standing before you, in enthusiastic support of Rick Caruso's visionary initiative to revitalize the Commons at Calabasas. Recently, Caruso Enterprises unveiled the masterful blueprint for Commons Lane, reflecting a profound understanding of our community's needs. With the track record spanning over twenty-five years, Rick Caruso's commitment assures us that the forthcoming enhancements align seamlessly with Calabasas' exacting standards. This proposal revitalization is not just a surface change. It is a strategic leap into the future, adapting to evolving ways we shop, dine, and live. Rick Caruso's successful ventures, like Palisades Village and The Grove and Roserun Miramar, testify to his exceptional ability to create captivating and welcoming environments. Having experienced firsthand the meticulous attention to detail regarding parking and safety in Rick's properties, I am confident that traffic concerns will be proactively addressed, enhancing our daily commute. The Commons facelift is a profound investment in Calabasas' future, promising job creation, increased revenue, and vibrant spaces for community connection. Consider the invaluable tax revenue, critical for funding education and programs benefiting our entire community. More retailers mean less reliance on neighboring areas, elevating property values and rendering Calabasas even more exceptional. Rick Caruso and his team have listened to our concerns and are actively addressing them. Supporting Commons Way is an endorsement of a leader who comprehends the soul of the community. Let us unite behind Rick Caruso and his team as they embark on this thrilling chapter of the Commons. This endeavor is more than a makeover. It is an unwavering commitment to fashioning a superior place we can proudly call home. Here's to the next twenty-five years and beyond of Commons Lane. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And my mic wasn't on, so we have a trio now. Delaney Grayson, Amy Grayson, and Josh Gabay, followed by our last speaker and public speaker, Lauren Klipova. And if I got that wrong, please correct me.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is Delaney Grayson. I've been a member and a community member of Calabasas for my entire life, and I have Amy Grayson, the Calabasas High School PFC president, and Josh Gabay, a fellow Mayor's Youth Council member. Like many other people my age, I think adding more places to spend time with family and friends, shopping and eating would be great for our community and the economic status of these shops. The Commons would also be a great place for me and many of my peers to come back and live after college in these new homes. Additionally, I was a part of one of the many youth groups that Mr. Blake Cottington reached out to and explained the Commons Lane project and addressed any and all of our concerns. This is an exciting vision for the future, and I hope you guys will support it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, Council members, and members of the public. I believe this plan will make the Commons a more vibrant destination for our families, offering more places for us to shop, eat, and gather outdoors. It will also increase the amount of tax revenue that goes into our city to support our schools and other public services. Caruso has consistently done a fantastic job on their developments and created beautiful shopping and dining experiences for families around Los Angeles, such as The Grove, the Americana Mall, and the shops at Westlake Village. And in all of these places, there is always a constant sense of community, community that everyone feels. However, with this plan, there is also a need to improve citywide transportation to accommodate for this great increase in traffic with the resident-living spaces in this development. But overall, this plan will bring a much-needed improvement to the quality of restaurants and dining experiences in Calabasas, and we are very excited to see the Commons Lane brought to life. I hope you will all vote in favor of this plan before you this evening. Thank you.
I think the kids said it best.
Thank you. Thank you to the trio. Lauren Klipova. And if I have it wrong, I apologize.
You nailed it.
Okay, good.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Lauren Klipova, and I've been a Calabasas resident my entire life. I remember the Commons when it didn't exist, and it was just a big pile of dirt. And upon its completion, I spent many a day and night here with my friends and now with my young family. And after twenty-five years of the Commons, it's time for a facelift. In addition to the added green space and retail shops, there will be new eateries added. And as a self-proclaimed foodie, I'm very much in favor of the new restaurants that will be joining the Commons Lane. I've personally attended and hosted gatherings at my home with members of the Caruso team, including fellow attendees Chris Robertson and Blake Cottington, where they reviewed the plans for the Commons Lane, answering our questions, and entertaining our feedback. I've been extraordinarily impressed with the Caruso team's engagement with the community, and it's evident that Caruso is invested in the success of Calabasas and our community. They have most certainly done their research, and over the course of numerous public hearings, it's time to say yes to the Commons Lane. I have gone ahead and submitted a support letter with the personal names of ten of my fellow friends and Calabasas residents, who are all in support of this venture. And there are also a number of people here this evening who will not have time to speak. And so I'd like to ask for a show of hands of all of those in support of the Commons Lane. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you to everyone for being here, speaking, providing written comment. It is truly appreciated by all of us, everything from Mayor Merdis, the founding mayor of the city, to the Mayor's Youth Council spoke today, and everyone in between. So, thank you. Council, we're gonna take a break till... Is eight-twenty good for everyone? Eight-twenty? Okay. And we'll be back in session. Thank you. Welcome to stay. All right, we're back. It is eight-twenty-six, and we are gonna begin with council questions and comments. And everybody, if you'd either have a seat, or please... We're gonna start now. Thank you. We'll start with questions from council, and we'll start with Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think I've had so many papers to look at, review, and study since college, especially when you don't go to classes in college and you gotta catch up for the finals. And everybody knows what I'm talking about. So, I thought I'd make it easy. I'd get the computer and start out on Word and try to pump out... pump out what I thought. But, you know, having lived here, like many in this room, for all these years and knowing the detail, the attention to detail that the Caruso-affiliated team has done for the Commons, and there are other properties which I've attended to, certainly gives you a great feeling of confidence. I can speak, particularly one of the speakers tonight mentioned the refuse can and one of the employees cleaning the refuse can. I was with my granddaughter at the lakes, having a smoothie, and one of the gentlemen was cleaning the garbage can, and around the garbage cans in the lakes are breasts, and he rubbed that garbage can like it was polishing a shoe. It was just amazing, and there was nobody around. There was nobody in sight, there was nobody watching him, there was no supervisor, it was just amazing. So what happened about another week or two later, it was summertime because my granddaughter loves going over there and getting the smoothie, and Saturday's our day, and there he is cleaning the can again. He was taking pride, it's almost like he's trying to make it a mirror. It was amazing. So, when I try to process through all these papers and, well, let me step back for a minute. I've watched the whole process. I'm a very thorough person, I have attention to detail too. I don't like missing something, I get upset if I can't find dirt where I'm supposed to be responsible to find it. I want to really thank a lot of people to get this project here tonight. I think the Caruso team, remarkable, on so many levels. And I'll give you the first level, just to give you an inkling of how valuable they treat the people that might be, might be using the properties or consider the properties, as a homeowner president, we met at, I think, a meeting, I forget exactly what the meeting is, but I was invited to go to the Palisades, and I went to the Palisades, it was a nice invitation, I kind of waited, should I, shouldn't I, I'm only a homeowner president, but I did. I went over there, and boy, I don't know if anybody has been there, but if you haven't, it's worth an experience. It was overwhelming, and my first impression was I got jealous. I was so jealous, I said, "Why didn't we get built next afterwards? You know, maybe, you know, maybe someday we'll get something like this, cobble streets." And then I found out that they were considering it. Now, this is last 2022, April, May, or June-ish, and what do you think? Here it is, 2022, and we're over at King's Fish Market looking at watercolor drawings that were made like a Vincent Van Gogh, or a Matisse, better yet, with watercolor. So, they really need a big pat on the back. Thank you very much for being with us all these years, for what you did before with your first 25, how you reached out to not only the fish market, to the community, to the senior center, there wasn't a place that was in the corner that didn't get touched, and that's evident because we all know it to be true. In listening to the speakers tonight, I'm very sorry for those that weren't made aware why they were missed, maybe they didn't know to go to the website, maybe, I can't answer the question, but those of us that did follow it know that it was done the right way. I want to thank staff. Now, what went into this is unbelievable, and when I say thanks staff, it's not just attending the meetings and doing some work. To launch this, if those, if anybody saw the planning commission meeting, and that's the next person, the next group I'm going to compliment, they went into this like a forensic accountant, and they put staff through the wringer. They put Caruso through the wringer. Chris, you stood up like a five-star general, but you needed to defend, and, you know, here it is, it's kind of a yin yang, and went back and forth, and I'm watching it on TV, and I'm saying, "Oh, my goodness, will this ever have a conclusion to it?" And here we are. It does have a conclusion, and hopefully we'll reach one tonight. So, again, staff, thank you very, very much for all your hard work. It was the architectural review panel, I know I'm missing the development review committee, I think it is, planning commission twice, long meetings, a lot of asks from the planning commission, and the team came back and fulfilled almost all of them, the important ones. When I found out about it originally, the things that I think a lot of us felt that were the most important, I can't say the hierarchy of, they're all about the same height, one is public safety. I've always been involved and feel strongly about public safety, so the Commons Lane, you're going to have pedestrians walking back and forth, you're going to have cars going, you're going to have children, you've got children playing in the park there, who knows what's going to be, a ball falls out on the street, there's so much to be considered. One problem, one accident, it'll never go away. So, I noticed and I see the, I have it with me, I'll take it out later if we have time, and that is, you've got the striped lane, almost like the Beatles album, Penny Lane, the album cover, it's really smart, it's wide, it's evident, you can see it, the curbs the way they are. I can go on and on and on, I don't have all night, I would love to read every page of what I read because it's, the detail is incredible. So, as far as thanking anybody, I hope I didn't miss anybody, and if I did, it's unintended. So, there were six requests that were made, I read all of them, and to me, in that section, for those of you that really have taken the time to read it, and I think that they're basically housekeeping items, it's not something that has to be discussed. The master conditional use permit, I mean, all of those, I was very, I was okay with every one of those. But the big issues of how I felt about the project and someone who has to make a decision on it, safety, parking, massing, height, these are big numbers, these are big issues. And then on the other side of the scale, the beauty, the success, the opportunity that it's going to present, the memories that it's going to bring, you know, where do you weigh it? As a council, our hands are somewhat tied when it comes to the housing elements, so in some of these questions, because they've been filled by a Caruso on the bonus side, regretfully, I don't think we can make a decision on that. But on many of the others, the team has really exceeded to what the planning commission wanted. There were 26 items, I have of each one of them, they were all really incredible. I really, I was a little worried about the planning commission because they went into so much asks, I mean, how much can you ask? And it went on and on and on, and here we go, we've satisfied almost every single one of them, condition satisfied, concern satisfied, concern satisfied, it can go on, and then the likelihood of, well, most importantly, when you have 26 concerns and they met with staff, and they worked most of them out in a very short period of time. So, we've reached a consensus that I feel is very valuable, and trust, and you can maybe throw some of the caution to the wind because they've demonstrated that they're safe to work with all the time. There's also, in reading, part of it is the project's evolution, and it's almost reading like a book, and as it goes through the book, or that evolution process, the applicant volunteered many of the setbacks, and that was a big issue, you know, the height of the building, how do you soften it a little bit, and you have it with setbacks, that was one. Each ascending level, the separation between the library and the building, that was very important, we don't want to overwhelm our library or City Hall, our beautiful campus here, we don't want to be put into Babies in a Corner, I forget the name of the movie, but, so, I feel good about that. The pedestrian movement, again, is about public safety, I really like the way they've made Main Street look and feel. I can't give enough hip hip parade to the planning commission and staff, as I look at all this and I keep on digesting all of it, each point. So, what happens? We have a planning commission that went off the rail, I thought, for a little while, but not that far, and they come back afterwards and work it out with staff for a 5-0 vote. And I know we all have many concerns about a lot of things. Change has its enemies, there's no way around it, whatever change that is, but I have faith in this project, I like the way it developed, I like the magnetism between staff and the Caruso team, and that's a big part of it, you know, there's no, doesn't seem to be antagonism. So, at the moment, I'm very satisfied and in favor of this project, and those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Buzajin.
Yes, I have quite a few questions and comments, and I don't know if it's staff or if it's the applicant who can best answer them. Going through attachment C, I'm glad you satisfied these concerns that you did satisfy, the native landscaping and the artificial turf, was very happy with that. That would be items C and D. Now, turning to item G. Okay, here, one of the things I had a problem with is what, some of the things that went on the planning commission, I understand there was a 5-0 approval, but then there were all these comments and questions and, and, you know, hesitations on certain issues, but I'm not sure what we were supposed to do with them, like, they approve it with these reservations, so then it just comes up here, and on a lot of these, I have no idea whether it's one commissioner didn't like it, all five who didn't like this, whether this was, we approve it, but this has to be fixed, or whether we approve it, but we'd like this to be fixed. So I guess we're just going to have to go issue by issue. On item G, the height, can you discuss a little bit about the height of building A? Was that a concern of every planning commissioner?
You know, like you're saying, it was a little bit difficult to follow if there was consensus or not on a lot of the issues, and so that's one of the reasons we wanted to bring all the issues to you for further discussion. I think, to an extent, there was a recognition that Caruso's conditions were helpful to what their concerns were with the height, but not necessarily a consensus as to if it went far enough, and so I think, in a way, the can was kicked a little bit down the road to consider what the conditions were that the Caruso team had proposed, to see if this group would feel differently about those. So, does that make sense?
Well, if I could jump in briefly with an additional, my recollection is that three of the commissioners expressed some concern with the height and two did not. Obviously, I'm running off memory, we'd have to verify with the tape, but that was my recollection.
Okay, so, did the three state that they approved it if the height goes down, or?
All three voted to approve the project as proposed, however. It was a 5-0 vote to recommend approval of the project as proposed, with the additional proviso that all of the concerns be conveyed to the council. It wasn't a qualified vote, it was, other than the qualification, it conveyed the concerns. And that was done through attachment C that goes through in detail.
I see it, but it doesn't go, it doesn't tell me what that means as far as, like, the three that had concerns about the height, if ultimately the applicant does not change the height, then they are okay with approving the project as is?
That's staff's understanding of their vote.
Yeah, that's correct. As the city attorney stated, we did not get a sense or a vote from the commission that said that they want the height to be reduced, they just had, they expressed their ongoing concern about the height.
Okay. I would say I'm also concerned about the height. It concerns me greatly that the height is a little bit too looming up there, and I would like to hear about possible ways to mitigate that, because that's a significant concern to me. Okay, on item K, residential parking spillover, I don't know what can be done about this, but the idea that residents will park in the subterranean, I believe they will, I do not believe that the visitors will necessarily, and I see no way of enforcing that. I assume staff concurs with that assessment, because you hinted at it several times in the appendices. We're not going to take any action on that, I assume, correct?
Yeah, you know, I think parking is difficult to enforce, but as, at least, and this is from a personal standpoint, as someone who's visited Caruso's properties and seen parking controls that they've used, they run a pretty tight ship, so, I mean, I can pass that on anecdotally.
K and L, I guess it is, together, item K and L.
Correct.
So, so what, like, give me an example of how you would enforce a guest not parking in the surface area?
The applicant may be better to answer that question, but they have a lot of staff on site, on their sites, and whether or not they can walk around and see if there's a guest parking in other spaces and observe that, they can probably better tell you as to what the probability of that is. I mean, I tend to agree with you, it's hard to enforce that.
I'm not, it's not a requirement of approval for me, I'm just curious what steps, if any, will be taken to help.
They've indicated, I believe in the conditions, they have requirements in their lease package that they'll tell their tenants that their guests are to park underground in the residential parking. They also have a surplus of parking, so by design, they have enough parking to accommodate the guests of the residential building.
All right, I don't want to belabor the point, I just think that that's going to be an issue. Item T, the building A parking stall width, you know, I understand, and I, I'm okay with the reduction in the inches of the width, however, I'd really like to have some spaces in the subterranean area be wider. I think there are going to be some larger vehicles that need it, and I would hate to have an unsafe condition there, particularly as noted next to the pillars and the ends, because it, I mean, I guess most of these units, I anticipate smaller cars, because I don't think large families are going to be there, but I do think there will be some larger cars that need accommodation. Had there been any discussion at the planning commission level of reserving certain areas for larger spaces, like, for example, the three-bedroom units, something along those lines?
There wasn't a discussion of reserving specific areas for larger spaces, but one thing that I think was lost in the conversation is that what they're proposing are not compact parking spaces, they are normal-sized parking spaces.
I know that.
And in addition to that, the parking spaces that are next to the column, that measurement is to the edge of the column so that you actually have additional space between the parking space on both sides of that column.
If I could jump in, isn't, as a factual matter, is it correct, Mr. Klein, that the space in the middle, not adjacent to a column, with the three space bays, are full size, per the city's code? Perhaps the applicant would know that too.
It's half a foot smaller than our code requirement.
So, the, can you unpack that? I think that'd be helpful.
So, the way that the floor plan or the parking layout is set up is you have three spaces in between a column, the two spaces next to both columns are at nine feet, that normally would meet our typical requirement for a parking stall. Our code requires an 11-foot-wide stall next to a column, in this case, they're asking for that nine foot. The space in between it, in between those two parking stalls, they're proposing is at eight and a half feet. All of this is generated by their request under the density bonus law. There may be some spaces that are, in areas that are not directly next to a column, that might have more spacing to them, but in general, they're asking for that reduction. We have seen- We have seen other projects in the city with underground parking that have that smaller parking width, and we have not, we're not aware of any issues with parking in those structures.
Okay. Then I have some really specific focus questions. When the Commons was first given its conditional use permit, it was allowed, certain retailers were allowed 24-hour openings. Now, I realize none of them use it now, but for example, the Ralphs, if you remember back that far, was a 24-hour Ralphs. And I believe that condition is still in there for Ralphs and maybe Rite Aid and a few others. So my question is, are they, are those conditions still available now that residents are going to be living there? Patterns might change. These stores might decide, hey, yeah, we are going to stay open 24 hours. I, I don't know. So which stores are now allowed to stay open 24 hours?
Well, we're scanning through the proposed conditions of approval. I don't recall having put in there any restrictions on hours.
So it would revert back to the conditional use permit? So the, the question is which, because not all of them were allowed to do that, only certain ones?
Oh, actually, in, in the resolution that's in front of the council, the grocery store and...
The pharmacy.
And Rite Aid would be allowed to stay open 24 hours.
Okay. So what, what kinds of enhanced security are planned for the Commons now that we know people are going to be there, living there, going there 24 hours? You're going to see people there, albeit fewer at night. And, you know, now, at, at three o'clock in the morning, if someone's walking through the Commons, it might attract attention and whatever, but it's, it's not going to be abnormal for that, once people are living there. And so I want to make sure there's adequate security measures, including the lighting and the security presence. What do, what do we have there?
I know there were some, there were some conditions that were added based on the planning commission discussion to increase, increase security, mostly in the parking areas. But I would actually defer that question to the applicant to answer what their plans are.
Maybe at the end of my questions, you can answer all of them, so I'll, I'll do a little, I'm putting asterisks next to the ones where they're referring to you. Okay. I was unclear in your discussion about waivers, Glenn, about the, how many waivers were granted to them? Are they entitled to one, but, but they are taking two?
They're, they're entitled to one concession, and that was for the parking stall reduction of the, of the parking stall size. They're requesting one waiver. Law allows them to request as many waivers as they feel necessary. But they're requesting one, and that's for the height of the two, two different structures, of the two areas, the Building A and Building, and the Building B complex.
And the waiver is for, the waiver is not indefinite, though, is it?
Well, it's a waiver of the, of the development standard, yeah. So it's for a waiver of the height, because typically it'd be 35 feet.
Right. But how, the waiver applies to how much more?
It applies just to the project that's before you right now.
But indefinite? It could be 10 stories tall?
There's no, there's no maximum limit on the amount of a waiver you can ask for, the requirement a developer can ask for. They can propose a waiver, and they have to meet the standards for it under the density bonus law to meet it, which in some are that the waiver is, is of a development standard that would physically preclude the projects from being constructed as proposed. And then there are certain conditions the city can, can impose to attempt to deny or modify the request.
Okay.
But there's no, it's not X percentage, it's just waive the standard.
But it has to be related to something in the project, it can't just...
Physically precluding the project at the densities proposed. That's where the relation comes in.
With all the additional residents and retail, and what, what additional measures are being taken? I mean, obviously, we all take Calabasas Road at certain times of day, it's completely impassable. So what additional measures are being taken to mitigate the traffic?
We do have Tom Miracle here as well. I can answer on a high level that, basically, the traffic study itself found that there is only, I believe, 60, let me get the number, 69 a.m. peak hour trips and 65 p.m. peak hour trips. They did the analysis, and they found that this condition is not going to increase significantly or impact any interchange significantly, enough to warrant any mitigation for it.
So there's no mitigation?
There's no mitigation. Residential uses are one of the lowest traffic generating uses there are.
I, look, I, I realize it's not going to be the difference between changing everything on the Calabasas Road. I, I don't want the other stuff, though. It's, there's no mitigation, right?
Correct. There's none.
Parking and circulation issues within the Commons. Right now, one aspect of these, the reports, and everything was very thorough, so I appreciate that staff gives me more than what I need, but one thing that was confusing to me, and I mentioned this to the city manager the other day, there's a lot of numbers involving the traffics, the parking spaces. There's residential and there's retail. There's what we require, there's what the state requires, there's what was there before, there's what they're, what's there going to be there in the future. It was not all in one place, so I'd like it laid out for the public. Because right now, I'll be honest with you, the Commons has enough parking, and they're actually have more parking spaces than they need. From my read of this, after this is done, they will have fewer parking spaces than they need, that, well, than under our code. So take me through that. Give, give me the numbers of what, under our code, is required and what they have now, and under our code, what they would have after everything's built out, retail and residential, assuming this is approved? What's required and what they would have?
Okay, so we separated out into a commercial component and a residential component. Now, let me pull up the, the chart that we had.
While Glenn's pulling that up, I'll answer the first question. There's 1,059 parking spaces currently at the Commons property.
Where, where is that number here? I don't see that.
Slide 16, I believe, covers the parking counts.
Where's the 1,059?
There's that slide. Also, Slide 7 shows there's 968 parking spaces out front and 91 parking spaces in the back of the property along the service road. That's where I just added those, that's 1,059.
And then there may be a typo. Slide 16 notes 1,060 spaces on the ground, so we're off by a space.
Oh, oh, that, okay, I was, all right. So that's the slide, now that was not in the packet, right? That's just tonight?
That was just tonight.
Okay.
I mean, there was a, a much more detailed analysis in the planning commission October report.
I'm not being critical of that.
No, no, I know, I was just...
It would be nice to have it all in one place, and now that I see the slide has this number, this number needs to be amended, but otherwise, the slides are correct.
Correct.
Tonight's slides.
Councilman, after our conversation, I understood your concern, so I requested that this slide be added, to be simplified. But you're correct, that wasn't in the original staff report.
Okay, so, so according to our code, they're underparked?
Correct.
That leads into another question I had, which was, you know, and maybe this is, they're going to have to answer this. Was it ever considered to do a parking structure instead of a, instead of subterranean?
That was not discussed with us, so, yeah, that better defer to...
I'm going to ask them, then, because parking structures can obviously be multi-storied, and they're probably, I don't know if they're less costly or not than going subterranean, quite honestly, I don't know. But I, I would be interested in that. As, as the public may remember, there was a proposal to have our parking lot be, have a parking structure at one time, and it was going to be shared three ways between Caruso, us, and Kilroy back, back in the day, and that did not happen, unfortunately. Okay, parking and circulation issues within the Commons. And maybe this is the applicant again. I, I have some concerns in looking at the layout, just, just from above, as we were given those views, of the ability to safely and, and efficiently move in a vehicle across the Commons, particularly with the addition of a new island of, of construction or a new structure in the middle of the Commons. So perhaps they can address that, too. What measures are, I mean, are we going to get more stop signs? Are we going to get one-way in any, in any particular areas or avenues? And, and their anticipation for that? And building, Structure B, I'd also like the applicant to answer. I, I continue to be concerned, I, I did visit the Palisades and did meet with Rick Caruso and, and the team. They were very gracious, we walked the entire area. The Palisades looks very nice. The residential worked on top of the retail there, but the problem with, with us is that that is an urban area, it's an urban setting, and we are not. And I do not really like that look for Calabasas. I would not mind an island in the middle with, with retail on, on the bottom and the top, but I did not like the component of the, of the residential on top. So those are my concerns. I did want to say something, and I, I really feel I do have to say it. I, I, I keep hearing about the housing element and the Housing Accountability Act, and I just want to tell the public, as I have before, that I no longer feel bound at all by the housing element. And the reason for that is the following. In 2020, the Housing and Community Development Department of the State misappropriated state monies and time and employees, and they campaigned in favor of a pro-development initiative on the Calabasas ballot. That's against the government code and against the law. It's actually not just a civil penalty, it's a criminal penalty. We have shown overwhelming evidence that that happened. They colluded with the developer, and they committed this criminal act. And thankfully, the residents voted by a margin of 78% to 22% to reject that development, even though a million, $1 million was spent on the yes side and $6,000 was spent on the no side. So because of their act, their criminal acts against the city, and the lack of punishment by the state, of course, of their own employees, in fact, they promoted the main actor Zachary Olmstead to be deputy director of the Housing and Community Development shortly after that. Because of that, their actions are null and void, and they are not able to enforce the law in Calabasas. That is my legal opinion. Nonetheless, to clarify my feeling about Caruso, because I was here 26 years ago when we undertook the Commons, I have known no other developer who's as responsible and who has built such a beautiful facility for us, and I might want to make this thing work, despite my concerns. So I'm hoping that some of my concerns can be addressed in the questioning. I really do think it's in Caruso's best interest, we know, to make this a successful project, because if it's not a successful project, then he suffers from the retail going downhill. So I'm confident that whatever comes out at tonight's meeting, whatever approvals are given, they will do their best to make it successful. But I would like my concerns to be addressed, and I'm sure that the team is going to do that at the appropriate time. That's all I have to say. Thank you for indulging me.
Were you waiting for questions, answers to your questions?
I think that maybe when we're done with all of us, because I think other council members will have questions, that we can, so in the interest of time, we don't want it to be answered right now.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Kraut.
Thank you. So we're only doing questions to staff at this point in time?
That wasn't my understanding. Was any council questions at all, whoever you want to address to? But apparently, we're going to do it that way so they can come address the answers one by one after.
All right. Well, first of all, after all that public comment, I've got to say, I'm the newcomer in the room. I've only been here for 19 years. It's made me feel young. A couple of questions, just numerically, factually, so I can get on the right page here. And, and I think I know the answer to a couple of these, but I think they're worthy of asking and answering. In the staff report, in the presentation you had for us, on page 10, it indicates 225 spaces for residential, and on page 16, it indicates 270. Could you clarify that for me?
The 270 is combining both Building As, Building A and Building B together.
Okay, that makes good sense, then. The, on a different note here, the Housing and Accountability Act waivers, I heard from our city attorney here that, that a waiver is allowed for a project where there is a condition that physically precludes the project from moving forward. And I don't know that it's that narrow. I was of the impression that if it precludes a project physically, financially, or otherwise, they could be granted a waiver. Could you clarify that for us?
Happy to clarify. There's two different standards at issue. For the incentives or concessions, the financial piece comes into play. There, the standard is, does the incentive or concession result in identifiable and actual cost reductions? For the waiver, the standard is, would it physically preclude construction of the development at, using the density bonus and those incentives or concessions at the proposed density? So that's where the distinction flies. Concessions, incentives, look at cost reductions. Waiver, it's a physical preclusion question.
Okay. And then in this case, we have a waiver for height, correct? And a concession for the parking dimensions?
Correct.
Okay. So when we get to the waiver for height, and, and a lot of this, I'm asking just for those that are opposed to the project, for those that are in favor of the project, to understand the process that we have to go through, what we're allowed to consider, what we're not allowed to consider. For the waiver for height, you know, one of the questions that comes to mind, and, and I can ask this to the applicant later, but I'd ask to you if any evidence has been given to you, is 75 feet enough? Is 65 feet enough? I mean, I can imagine that if we made smaller units, we could get more on a floor and probably chop a floor out, but maybe that doesn't work financially, but I'm hearing that financially goes with the concession. So I guess my question to staff is, what documentation do we ask for or receive that backs up these sort of waivers?
That is a good question for the, the applicant, because under the government code, it states that the city is only allowed to accept or collect information that is specified by the state. We're not allowed to analyze pro forma, we're not allowed to ask them why they have to go to, why they have, why they need a waiver. The only thing that we're allowed to look at under government code, under the density bonus law, is whether or not the project is an eligible density bonus project. And because they're proposing 10% of the units for low or very low income, they're a qualified project under the density bonus law. That's the limit to what we're allowed to request from the applicant.
Okay, so the waiver for height, if, if an applicant was to come here and say, I need 17 stories, and we, we can't even, if, if they had entitlement to build 17 units on an acre and they wanted their units to be an acre wide each, there's got to be some...
Technically, under the state law, we can't ask that. You can ask the applicant, but we are not allowed to require them to submit that documentation.
The standard is, if I could jump in, reasonable documentation to prove the eligibility for the waiver. So it's a matter of reasonably documenting that the, the standard at issue that they claim physically precludes construction at the proposed density truly is, truly precludes, physically precludes construction at that, at that density with that standard in place. So there's no theoretical maximum, but the theoretical maximum would be proving that a, they needn't go that high to still meet the requirements. It also, something, you know, 17-story example, the rest of the building code's going to kick in at some point.
Okay. As far as parking spaces, the rest of LA predominantly is parked 18-foot by eight and a half foot?
Actually, Tom Miracle's here, he would be better at answering that, but that's our understanding, is that's a...
Yeah.
That's a generally regular site parking space.
Okay. Just a general, I, I, I don't need to get a sworn testimony here or anything, I'm just trying to get a general handle on this. And the 20 by 9 requirement is a Calabasas requirement since our inception, is that correct?
The, our code requirement is nine feet by 20 feet, and if you're next to a, a column or a wall, it expands to 11 feet wide. That's a Calabasas code requirement. But I just did get confirmation from Mr. Miracle that what they're proposing for the reduction is still a standard parking stall in most other jurisdictions.
There is a requirement, as I understand it, in the Green Building Code, that all new residential buildings would have photovoltaic solar, battery backup, car chargers, and the electrical capacity to handle all of that stuff in the future. That's part of the, the Green Building Code. And I saw a notation in here that photovoltaic would be included in this project, but I don't see any on the site or on the roof. Could you tell me what the plan is there? Is it, is it, has the space been allocated, or is, any discussions on that?
What I can tell you is that they will be required to meet the building... What I can tell you is that they will be required to meet the building code requirement, including that, including that provision. At this point in time, because they haven't gone into their engineered detailed drawings, they haven't identified exactly where all of that will take place. The applicant may have more information about that. But they are going to be required to design to and meet the current building standards.
Okay. And just to be clear, this is a new building, it's not an addition, is that correct?
I mean, that's my understanding, but it will have to be analyzed by our Building and Safety Department when it gets submitted.
Okay.
Building B for sure is, by the way.
What's that?
Building B is for sure a new building. Building A, they'll have to analyze that.
That might also be a question to pose to the applicant regarding the footings. My understanding is building A will be independent with independent footings, but I'm not an architect. Ask their architect.
Sure. There was a notation in there of five additional outlets for alcoholic beverages? But I saw another reference to fourteen. Could you tell me where I missed up?
Currently, what is approved for the Commons is a total of twelve alcohol permits. Nine for restaurants slash retail, two for the grocery store and Rite Aid, or one each, and one for the movie theater. They're requesting to add five new restaurants slash retail and effectively remove the movie theater from that component. So that would raise the total from nine restaurants to...
Fourteen.
Fourteen. And then two alcohol permits for the grocery store and the Rite Aid.
Okay. The last question, well, I'm not sure it's the last, but, uh, my next question anyways. When we look at a number of things, the Housing Accountability Act for the residential units, uh, you know, basically, uh, and I don't want to speak bad about it. We need to solve the housing crisis. We need to take on our share of solving the housing crisis. I think it's really impossible to build low-income housing in Calabasas. It's Calabasas. The cost of the land that you're building on is already driving the price up. So I certainly commend any developer that can come in and, and build a project like this and include some affordable units. The commercial or the retail side of this project, though, doesn't, how is that coupled with the, the Accountability Act? Specifically, when we look at the parking for the residential, that's a concession. When we look at the parking for the commercial, does that have to be taken into account as part of our concession?
Technically, the, the project as its design qualifies under the density bonus law because of the, the ratio of how much commercial there is to residential. So under the state law, as long as there's a certain percentage of residential, then the whole project does qualify. In this particular case, they're not requesting a reduction in the parking size of the commercial parking. They are requesting in the, a reduction in the number of parking spaces for the commercial component. That's authorized under our municipal code.
And that's authorized under the municipal code because of the shared parking arrangement?
Our municipal code has several, several ways in which a property owner can request a reduction in parking. Some of it could be related to how close they are to public transportation. In this case, they're making their request based off of a shared parking analysis. And effectively, how you have multiple uses on the property, not all uses may be peak at the same exact time. One example is you have coffees, uh, coffee restaurants that will be open and more heavily utilized in the morning, maybe early afternoon. Then you have restaurants that will be utilized more often or more heavily in the evening time. So our code authorizes the review authority to approve a reduction in the number of parking spaces required. And it's based off of a parking analysis or a parking demand study. In this case, the applicant has submitted that.
Okay. I have a few more questions, but I think they're probably best for the applicant. So at this point, I'll turn it back over to our mayor.
I think we were presenting the questions now for the applicant to come give all the answers if possible. Is that my understanding of what we're doing? Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Alright, so questions for the applicant? I'll just run through them if you could just take a note. Residential parking, uh, in building A in particular, it was noted that visitors would be parking within the structure. Could you tell us how many designated visitor spots are versus designated resident spots? I'm sure you'll be selling with your units a certain number of parking spots to go with each apartment. So hopefully, we can get some sort of a number of how many visitors will be able to park underneath. I've noted, I think on the plans, that the pedestrian entrance is going to be, the pedestrian entrance to building A is right next door to our library here at the corner of Civic Center Way and Park Sireno. Just want to confirm that, uh, that's just what it appears to be on the plans. The elevations on A two sixteen and A two seventeen don't show the stepped-back, uh, building as was described in the planning commission, uh, request. And I was wondering if you could better describe for us how much that's going to step back and, and give us an idea of what that looks like? I think I saw a glimpse of it in the video, but I, I couldn't quite tell. It looked to be set back from one of the angles there.
We, we do have a slide for that, if you want us to bring that up right now and show you.
Certainly can't hurt. While I'm rambling on, let's go ahead and put it up on the screen for the viewing enjoyment of everyone here.
And his staff is clicking that up. I believe that's also attachment K to the staff report for the public.
Uh, Mari, do you have the, the handouts of the extra slides? Thank you. You can get it in front of you as well.
When it comes to commercial retail parking spaces, uh, I noticed that we do have some, some notes in there as far as, uh, from our planning commission, reducing the size of the spaces in lieu of reducing the number of spaces. I'm certainly in favor of that, especially mentioning that the, uh, you know, the, the, the reduced size that we're looking at would be what's similar all across Southern California. Even the potential of some compact spots to increase that number. And I'd love to hear the applicant's take on, on how, you know, flexible Caruso might be with wanting to do that. Or why they'd prefer larger over more. Would love to hear some more information about that.
Ju- just for clarity on that one, that was a condition that was added, and that's only for the, the service road. So right now, there's ninety-one spaces on the south side of the buildings that is along the fire lane and the service road. That's the area that the, the conditions allow for a, a smaller, compact parking space, not for the, the rest of the commercial parking.
There were two more mentions of it in the planning commission table that you gave us, including the potential for compact spaces in some areas. So again, some more information on that would be really helpful. And, uh, lastly, when we look at the conditional use permit, there's been notation in there of avoiding the previous conditional use permit with respect to the Commons and that only the new conditional use permit would govern. I did have, like, some, some mention, uh, councilmember Bazagian mentioned the hours. There's so many other things that were in there. And, and I'm wondering what we might be, you know, losing or gaining in that respect? In particular, we are changing the square footage of this particular, uh, development here. And I think my question is, is there anything in reserve? I mean, when we say we're doing, and I forget the numbers, but was it three hundred thousand square feet? Something like that?
Approximately, yeah.
Approximately three hundred thousand square feet? Are we building all three hundred thousand square feet now? Or is there something in that that's reserved for a future build-out? I guess, I know that, for example, we're asking for, uh, we're, we're showing nine hundred and thirty-one spaces, but we're asking for a requirement of only eight hundred and ninety-one. I'm wondering if there's similar things for square footage that are built into the upcoming conditional use permit and what our future plans are here for building out with those spaces and any square footage?
And the answer to that I can, I can give you right now is no. The, the, the maximum in the revised CUP is the project that's before you right now, given the entirety of the center adding on. So if they were to want to add on to that, for instance, they would have to come back and get a new implementing conditional use permit.
Okay. Alright, thank you. I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pritam Weintraub.
Thank you to everyone who's here tonight. It is very evident that no matter where you feel about this project, everyone loves the Commons. So I think that is something that everyone can agree on. And even people, the fact that people that disagree with the project are sitting here, you know, I think, trying to figure out how to make it work, just really says something about how this community loves the Commons and truly how this applicant loves the community. There's no other applicant, there's no other, we really have an amazing partnership with the Caruso team, not talking about development, just talking about public safety, giving back to the community. So I'm confident that they want to work with us as much as we want to work with them on this. So I start by saying that. And something that I've enjoyed through this process is how they've been willing to meet with every single resident who has had interest to meet with them. No matter what side of the project you were on, they would sit down and want to speak to you. So I think that says a lot of how we got here today. So with that, I have a bunch of questions. And we had like thousands of pages, so just bear with me. There, my questions are within all of these different documents. So, let's see, where should we start? Okay. I'm looking at the city staff report and it's agenda item number six. Number five, it says, "Provide that all existing building structures and uses on the common site shall be deemed legally conforming." I wanted to know what is currently legally, what is not legally, what is not legally conforming now? What is, what is non-conforming?
Uh, that was a request specifically given to us by the applicant. We are not aware of any structure on site that is legally non-conforming.
So if there isn't anything that falls within that, I was wondering if we can take that out? So that's something that we could discuss or when you, when the applicant comes up? I think that's important to bring up. When it talked about this shared parking reduction, I was wondering if you could just explain further what the code allows? And I know Michael and I spoke about this on the phone, but just shared parking takes into account not just the Commons Shopping Center, the larger area, so if you can just explain that and how that impacts how we got, how you arrived at the parking requirements?
Actually, in this case, uh, the shared parking analysis took into account only the Commons Shopping Center. Um, and it's based on the variety of uses that are proposed and the potentially offsetting peak times of those uses. And there's also a credit for what's called internal capture, which means people that are going to be in the residences, um, they get a credit because they would use the facility as opposed to driving to the facility. So they submitted their parking analysis, which was exhibit... Exhibit J. And on page seven, I think's a, a really good table to look at, because that is their demand analysis based on every month and given weekdays and weekends and then overall. And as you can see at the bottom of that table, their maximum demand, this is the calculated demand of all those uses at the absolute worst time of the year, is going to be eight hundred ninety-six spaces utilized. And that's going to be utilized in early December, which is typically thought of as the holiday shopping season. You know, when we're all trying to go to the malls and, and we can never find a parking space. I mean, and it shows the rest of the year is significantly under that in the six hundred to seven hundred, uh, car range. So that's about as far as my engineering will take me to answer this question for you. But if you want to know a little bit more, Tom Miracle could probably speak to the methodologies behind how, how these, these calculations are made.
No, that's fine. And then when it talks about under request amending the maximum allowable development density on the project site, if you can just elaborate on that a little further, request number on page four.
That's just pure square footage.
Right.
Of what they're proposing.
The square footage right now is limited to two hundred thousand?
Correct.
Okay. And so, but is it also looking, the project site, just the Commons or the greater?
Just, just the Commons.
Okay.
Correct.
Grabbing my next. So I know we talked about like the technical aspects of the traffic study, that the increased trips would not change the level of service or... You were talking about like the technical traffic study. But the reality is, Calabasas Road, Valley Circle Parkway, Calabasas are congested at certain hours of the day. So you, no one really needs a traffic study to look at that. So I saw in the conditions of approval, it says, "Prior to the issuance, it's condition number one hundred and forty-two." And it says, "Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant must pay the citywide traffic mitigation fee of approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars." So I wanted to know what will we be able to do with, what will we be able to do with that money to help improve the traffic mitigation? Because I think a lot of the concerns that people have, no matter how much they love the project, any increases in traffic, you know, increases people's quality of life in the community. So I'm just want to, and I'm not placing that burden on the applicant. It's like everyone's burden to share as more things come and go into this community.
It's a citywide traffic mitigation fee payment, so it's, it's not, uh, not tied to any specific requirement out of this action. The Traffic and Transportation Department will be able to use that to make improvements as they see fit. They understand that this project will have, you know, will have that impact. And I'm sure that they'll look at using that funds to alleviate congestion around here. They could look at certain things like signalization, timing.
See, I think things like that are so important for everyone to hear, that you're bringing in, potentially, this big, larger project is coming in. And so how are we going to help the traffic in the area? So I want to be like proactive in that conversation as we discuss traffic and circulation in this area. So Tom?
Thank you. Tom Miracle, I'm a consultant to the city for traffic and transportation issues. The traffic mitigation fee program has a specific list of projects that the fee is to go to, to construct. Now that we have a new general plan, we're actually just started updating that fee program, which is going to be expanding to allow that fee program to do things like traffic signal timing changes and things that provide more flexibility for staff and the council to direct it towards things that provide not just a specific capital projects, but programs and projects that will help us make traffic flow better in the community. So the, the specific dollar amount now will go into the program. The program now doesn't have a specific project for addressing that specific issue on Calabasas Road. But it, it could in the future when we bring it back for updating in the next year.
So what traffic improvements do you see that could help circulation in this area? Because that is a concern.
It, it is. And, and, you know, getting additional capacity in the roadway by adding lanes is difficult for a variety of reasons. The property purchase and building, state law doesn't currently allow us to add capacity to roadways without having other impacts that we have to address. So really, looking at the signalization, we, we do have a project that was recently funded through a grant to update our traffic signal system. Currently, a lot of the traffic signals in the city are not coordinated and haven't been updated or looked at in many years. So that's, that is a project that we are going to be starting this next year to completely update, you know, the traffic signal system that's across the hallway, completely upgrade that system, upgrade the hardware and the controllers so that it can work better and, and be more efficient and actually be monitored.
So that could, that could potentially help the backup along Calabasas Road?
To the extent that optimizing the traffic signals can help that, you know, the, the issue really is you get to Old Town and there's just not a lot of capacity to push that traffic through. And anytime the freeway backs up, people divert traffic to, to Murrow Road, to Calabasas Road. And there's not a lot we can do about that. We can ask Waze and, and, and Apple and Google to tell people not to divert, but people already know that that's the way to divert. It, it is a difficult problem and it probably has no answer. It, it is a difficult problem, and it probably has no answer, honestly.
I'd like us to try to figure out some answers so that when we bring projects forward, that the community feels some confidence in terms of addressing like the issue of traffic, because that's, that's the big one, you know? No matter how much you love a project or support it, just any slight impact. So I know that, that's something that the city can be working on as well, so. Okay. Let's see. And then my question for staff, if this project is approved tonight, is this the project that has to be built? And Michael and I spoke about this.
The condition of approval states that it has to be built in substantial compliance with the approval by the council. It states that the director determines whether or not any change is considered significant change and therefore would have to return back to the council. There's not a quantitative or numeric trick, number that would trigger that change, but they, so there, there's a level of subjectivity. For example, if they came and submitted, submitted building plans, now they may have a phased project, so they may not want to build all of it at once for coordination reasons, but if they come forward and say, you know, we've decided we don't want to build one of the, the two buildings, we would find that to be out of compliance or a significant change and no longer in substantial conformance, and we'd bring that back to the city council. If through their final building designs, they decide to shave off a couple of units or reduce the height for whatever reason, maybe through their pro forma, they decided to remove a floor, for example, then I don't believe that we would consider that to be a significant change and, and we would allow that to move forward through building and safety.
Thank you. Chris, when you come up, I think James brought it up, if you could talk about security on the project? And the other thing, talk about the demolition plan. It's on like C one oh two. I'm curious how you do with the operating commercial center, how you would go about demolition? It's like a very technical question, I don't even think it's that important, but it's on C one oh nine. Will anything, actually, I got this answer, it was about the undergrounding of the utility, so disregard that. Oh, on C one oh eight, it talked about existing utilities, and it said potentially, is that just because it hasn't been fully analyzed? Like you don't know yet until you get into that next level? So that was one further question. And I guess this was actually a question for Tom and Curtis and some other staff, but I was also thinking that we should really be utilizing our shuttle and demand responsive services in terms of, there's a lot of people in this community who would love to go to the Commons for a meal, for shopping, and they don't need their car there. So that's something that we can work on as a city to help really use that as a destination to get people not using their cars. A question that I had for the applicant, will any of these units have accessible features? We talk a lot about people in Calabasas wanting to age in place in this community and potentially wanting to live in this type of housing, but as people age, we want to look at accessibility. So that was one question.
If you might, if you don't mind, I can answer that question because I did check with building and safety.
Oh, great.
They are required to make sure that all of their units are accessible. There's different levels of accessibility, but, and they will have to meet maneuverability requirements within the kitchen, within at least one bathroom, and to every single room within the unit. Then they have to be adapt, from there, a certain percentage of them have to be adaptable to higher levels of accessibility.
Oh, okay, thank you for getting that answer.
That's a building code requirement.
And then I know the housing is going to be affordable housing, but has there been any consideration, I don't even know if it's legally allowed for there to be workforce housing? So just when you come up, if we could talk about that as well? And I think a lot of my questions were asked by my colleagues, so if I have any more, I will. But most of my questions really revolved around the traffic and circulation, and I appreciate the time that Michael, you spent yesterday answering a lot of the questions prior, so thank you so much.
Thank you, and I think I have even less questions because so many great comments and questions have been brought up, but I just want to start with some initial comments as Councilmember Albrecht mentioned, and everybody's mentioned. The Commons has been here twenty-five years. Everybody who has spoken, without exception tonight, said, has indicated what a great center of the community, what a great representation, how wonderful it's been for our residents for the past twenty-five years. And we, on all aspects, all of us, want to keep it that way and make it better. That's the goal here. Going back to when it was originally built, Dave Williams, who I saw in the video, I was a manager and a board member at Sunrise Little League before the Commons was built and got to know him, had no idea back in the days. He'd probably say I was, did a bad job, but that's okay. I watched, and we all read a lot of documents, papers, attachments, exhibits, so we, we have done our homework. I watched both planning commissions, and I want to thank each and every member of the planning commission, our staff as well, who did a tremendous job, and of course, the applicant and working with our staff. But, but I watched our planning commissioners, and they worked very, very hard to get this to us in maybe not the perfect scenario, according to one speaker, there's a couple bags we still have to look through and, and read after tonight or, or later tonight. But they did a great job, and it really helps us. I mean, watching those meetings is, is something everybody in, who's coming here to speak should do, because that information is tremendous, it really is. We get to make a decision or tonight or another time, but they do a lot of incredible work to get the project to us to discuss. And their, their vote was five oh, and as our city attorney mentioned earlier, that vote was not with conditions, but with more or less suggestions to us or recommendations of sorts, right?
Well, yeah, points for the council to consider as stated.
Thank you. And brought up by members of the public and by me always, the movie theater. I am, since day one, when it opened up as a former theater and all the way through till, and, and I do want to publicly thank Caruso and the team for helping reopen that theater. Not too many people know what they did to help that theater be open even during this time. I'm there a lot, I promote it as best I can, and I, I drag people there, I'll buy tickets on Tuesday to go in for forty-five minutes, but I also realize that when I'm there and with there in, in a movie with three other people, that isn't a good sign. And that's not just our theater, that's many. So I will be maybe most sad to see that go if this project does go forward. I've said that to you, and I appreciate your promoting a mayor with the movie, movie with the mayor coming up as well to help things. The comments on the parking, and, and this has been a big one, the discussions and the issues are the same for all of us, I believe, safety for the community, safety for residents, safety for anyone walking in the Commons, driving through, parking being a potential discussion and issue, traffic issues on the road as Mayor Protam and others have discussed and others have brought up massing and height. To me, I look at the idea of the Commons and I look at what the Caruso and the team have done at all their properties. It makes zero sense, and I'm just putting my two cents in there, it makes zero sense that they would build a very expensive project and not have sufficient or more than sufficient parking for people who want to come use the commercial or residential spaces, because that would mean commercial spaces would fail, that would mean no one would want to be in the residential spaces. So that doesn't fit with anything I've ever seen in any of the projects, and I've been to all of them actually at different times in my life. And Palisades is an example, jumping to the Palisades, talking about discussions about the, the residential with commercial on the bottom, residential on top. I see absolutely, other than the issues discussed of safety and making sure everyone's safe, which is Caruso's number one issue, and then of course going to be the city's issue potentially, I see no problem with that. I see it being a very good model. And as a matter of fact, I've heard it discussed at different times on this dais about right across from Calabasas Road, making that a similar situation with commercial on the bottom, residential on top. So I don't see a difference there, and maybe I'm missing that point. I guess I'm speaking more than asking questions right now, but again, I think that's a very good model, and the parking aligns with everything, all codes at least for, for that area. And again, it's a, it's a great opportunity to get some more restaurants to, I'm big on restaurants too, restaurants and, and shops in there that the, the community wants. The community wants, I believe, more updated, more, more, a, a different variety of choices and to benefit us all. I have a question on exhibit, this will be a question, attachment J, K O A, the, page seven, you referred to the, that, and so I'm getting to look at it. When was that analysis done? What year or years were considered in those numbers?
Well, the date on the report's July twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Right.
You know, the demand analysis are based on, on rates and engineering standards that are current. So, you know, it, it's, it's based on square footages, it's based on the type of use and what the parking utilization rate would be for those specific uses. And then they take into account how all those uses fit together in terms of their peak demand periods.
So is it like analytics for baseball, where numbers are telling you what to do?
Something like that, yeah.
Okay, the reason I asked that, I didn't know if it was over one year, over twenty-five years, over ten years. The reason I'm asking that, we're talking about the movie theater, which some of us love, love movies, we all do. Being not busy, and certainly during the pandemic, not busy at all. So if you're talking about recent years with a theater being empty, yet square footage considering, what does that mean for actual uses of space? Does that mean when that's, when that develops? This is a question, I guess, for you probably. When the development is, if it's approved, built, and you have residents and visitors versus an empty theater, does that analytic, do the analytics on page seven change? So that's more a question, I think, for the experts.
I can tell you the answer would be no on that, because it's purely based on square footage and full util, full utilization
Okay.
of that space, regardless of whether people come or not.
Okay, all right. I, I'm gonna still leave it to the experts, but I, I had to ask, because again, if it was a ten-year or if it's recent, when people really haven't been going to theater and before then the pandemic, maybe the Commons, what, nowhere was as busy as it was in two thousand nineteen, let's say. So just a thought, just a comment. All right. A quick side note, not to be rude or pick, James, I just want to make clear that was your solo opinion, and I or others may disagree, but I want to make sure.
I said that.
Yeah. I wanted to make sure, I may not have heard. Not debating, just giving an opinion, your opinion, you're entitled to. Going to, sorry, I have notes here, I want to get them to questions. And this may have already been done, we're talked about on page four of the report, talking about the pedestrian walkways, talking about enhancing and safety, that's already been brought up, those are questions for the applicant. And then for staff, could you please detail and explain why, which you already have somewhat, why the spaces being allowed to be reduced? Why is it allowed to be reduced? I think our city attorney covered that earlier. Is that right?
Yes.
All right. Then I'm not going to ask for it again. On the requests, what would the maximum density be otherwise under the item number one, under the applications for conditional use permit? Here it's three hundred and ninety-six thousand seventy-seven square feet. What would the maximum density be otherwise if it wasn't?
Currently, it sits at two hundred thousand.
Okay. That's what I thought, I'm just making sure these things. More restaurants, a good thing. Okay. And detailing the off-site consumption under, on page five, talking about item number three under conditional use permit. When we talk about off-site consumption, obviously you have Ralph's, you have CVS or Rite Aid, my apologies. What is being considered there to add to that that would be off-site consumption? On-site, I understand.
The state's alcoholic beverage control licenses do allow for, if you sell alcohol for on-site consumption, do allow within those permits, unlimited, as long as it's a, a subservient portion of it for off-site consumption? You can, if you, let's say, for example, you wanted to order a bottle of wine and drink half of it, you can bottle it up and you can take it with you.
Okay.
And some, some can sell the bottle to you and you can take the entire bottle to go.
But we're talking about wine specifically, maybe champagne of some kind.
Could be champagne.
But we're not talking about someone ordering a hard drink and carrying it around like it's New Orleans, right?
No, there's, there's other laws that prohibit that.
Just want to make sure. Okay. And under the same condition, scenic corridor permit, permit, people, as, as we've seen in the exhibits and the attachments, when you're driving on Calabasas Road, you will see some of the building from Calabasas Road. I just want to clarify that for everyone.
Yeah, absolutely. The freeway is actually the scenic corridor, we did some analysis to present on both, right? Calabasas Road, because it is a main thoroughfare and a lot of people drive down there. And we, we'd noticed that, you know, on Calabasas Road, probably a little bit more visible than on the freeway, there's a lot of development, a lot of mature landscaping. You're not going to be able to hide this project, but there's a lot of existing development and landscaping that will, you know, partially screen it and probably offer some peek-a-boo views of it, but.
Okay, thank you. And then again, other questions they had about the shared parking reduction and the density bonus concessions, including height, and the waivers have been covered very well already. Turning to page seven of the report, we're talking about that, the safe, very important. Again, we're talking about safe pedestrian movement in the main street, and that's again been brought up by Mayor Protam, Weintraub and others. That's something I would like to hear a little bit more about from the applicant when they are discussing things as well. And just last but not least, asking us to give the city manager approval as part, if we are doing that tonight, to talk about the spaces and negotiating something, that is something that would come back to council after, for approval, correct?
That's correct, Mayor, so the authorization is just to negotiate, not a formula of acceptance or approval of that.
Okay, thank you very much. Those are my comments, more than questions, but a few questions. Before we have the applicant.
Sorry, I missed, I missed your last question. Was in reference to just the parking or the overall approval of the project?
Councilman, there are ten spaces adjacent to the city library.
Oh, you're talking about just those ten?
Yeah. And so per the staff report, the request is that.
No, I, now I get that.
Okay. All right. Unless there's other council questions, I'll, we'll go ahead and ask the applicant to address some of the questions that have been raised, please, if you would.
Hello, good. Okay, I will try my best to go through this list. On sheet A two zero one, there's a small diagram that shows a typical parking bay, so I think that's really helpful to kind of illustrate what we're talking about. Like staff mentioned earlier, there is a six-inch reduction, yes, on the plan set, I'll give you a moment to turn to it. So there's a six-inch reduction versus what would typically be required by the city for that middle parking stall. And then for the stalls on either side of that middle space, those are nine feet with a ten-inch offset from the column, but as you can see on the illustration, there's a lot of room between the space and all of the dead space in between the columns. And you can see that the column placement is towards the front of the vehicle and the back, so you have plenty of room to open a car door. These are the typical sized spaces that we've incorporated at all of our other residential buildings, and they work perfectly fine. That said, there are a few oversized spaces in our entitlement plans as currently drawn, and as we move forward into design, we're happy to look at opportunities to increase those spaces. As part of the question that was raised about making sure pedestrians are interested As part of the question that was raised about making sure pedestrians are introduced safely with the cars passing, that was a point that was raised by the architectural review panel, and as a result of that discussion, we incorporated quite a few design features into the project. We've incorporated elevated crosswalks that will include decorative paving, so you have not just a visual queue, but a physical queue separating pedestrians from vehicular traffic. It'll also act to slow traffic speeds. We'll incorporate signage. We're looking at other technologies such as light, and, and we'll have armed barriers. We'll incorporate additional stop signs. So we've, we're confident that we've designed it to ensure the pedestrians will safely intermingle with, with traffic. The alternative is not an option. Safety is paramount to us, as I think everyone here understands. We have security on site as it stands today. We'll be introducing additional security when we bring in the residents. Our parking garages will be completely secured, so you won't be able to access them unless you are a resident who has a QFAB or whatever other technology we're implementing, or you're a guest. So that'll be the first gate that you have to pass through. And then if you're not a resident and you're a guest, you will be required to pass through the concierge service, and someone will have to escort you to the elevator and give you access to whichever floor resident that you're visiting. So we'll have a lot of checks and balances in place to ensure that guests are, A, allowed to be there, and parking in the right designated areas. And then you, you're familiar with the condition that we incorporated as a result of the feedback that the planning commission provided regarding the security technology that will be implemented in the parking structure itself. Yes, that's correct. The residential lobby will be located next to the civic center. And then we, I'm not sure if the setback issue was adequately addressed. I have a lot of notes, I have to go get that one. Okay, so we've proposed two conditions to incorporate additional step backs on building A. Some of those step backs were reflected in the animation that you saw earlier, but some of them were not, because that was done before we made the changes at the planning commission meeting. So we have, we'll have a minimum of 35 and a half feet between the first residential level and the building next door, and that'll increase all the way up to almost around 50 feet at the upper level. The way that the condition is written, it gives us flexibility whether we want to terrace it, or if we want to do like a solid line setback, but we will have significant space between the building next door. And then when it comes to the amenity space on the upper level, we've set that back over 108 feet from the building next door, so you won't observe it at all. And then we've also incorporated the step backs along the oval, but I know the civic center is more of the concern.
I, I can add just real briefly to that. The extra slides that were passed out, slide 31 and 32 have graphic examples of what she's referring to, for, just to see it with a, with a cross section.
And those changes have, have not been made in the elevations, as you mentioned, so those will be incorporated as we move forward into design. Let's see. We are asking for, or we incorporated as a condition of approval in response to the feedback we received from planning commission, the opportunity to reduce the parking sizes along the service road only down to seven and a half feet. And that's an opportunity to increase the number of parking spaces. There was a lot of discussion about locating employee parking along the service road, which is another condition that we agreed to. There's about 91 spaces back there right now, and if you ever happen to go back there, they're significantly underutilized. So we're actually in the process right now of working with our tenants to move as many of those employee parking spaces back to that rear access road, and we'll continue to work with our tenants as we move forward to maximize the use of that road and also possibly re-stripe. Regarding demolitions, so as we move forward in design, we'll be putting a construction management plan together that'll provide all the details regarding construction. It'll be submitted to staff and reviewed by them. But the focus is to minimize disruption to the center. It's paramount to us that the, the center continues to operate. It's not an option for it not to. So we would probably try to fast-track construction of building B so that we can pull as much of the activity onto building A or the building A footprint or pad as possible, and then we would also locate a lot of the construction equipment along the service road, working with the city. We would also pair that with a robust marketing plan to make sure that our tenants are well aware of everything we're doing, how to navigate construction, in addition to communicating that to our guests so they know where to park and how to access everything. But it's, it's absolutely paramount that the, the center continues to operate safely and seamlessly during that period. Regarding C108, yes, that is potentially, because it's still very conceptual, and we'll develop that as we move into design. And then regarding workforce housing, absolutely. We would like to explore the opportunity of doing priority for people who live and work in Calabasas, possibly a teacher preference or employee housing, but we want to make sure that this is serving the community of Calabasas in as much as possible, and we'll, we'll work with the city as we continue to move forward with that. I think we covered the off-site consumption, but yes, it's not intended to serve bottles of tequila and have people walking around. You know, in the event that we, we have a tenant who wants to open a wine and cheese shop, for example, that may be an off-site seller in addition to the restaurant who might want to sell a bottle of wine. And then the reason for the height waiver is really, the existing zoning allows for 35 feet. The existing movie theater is around 55 feet. So we would need to bring the residences above the existing retail, and we just need that extra envelope. We're also providing housing that's really meant to be comparable to the single-family home experience, because we have heard from the community that that's really what they're looking for. The housing should reflect the needs of Calabasas, and Calabasas is looking for larger-sized units with beautiful fits and finishes. So we need that extra envelope to accommodate the units, especially given the existing profile or the profile of the existing residence, I mean, the retail at the, at the base. I think that I got everything, but please let me know if I missed something.
Okay, I'll turn to my colleagues. Councilmember Kraut, you have additional question or a question?
Just a couple of quick things I had asked for, I'm not sure if you can clarify. Residential versus visitor spots, are they allocated? Do you have a numbers for us?
Sure, thank you. So there's a significant surplus of residential spaces above and beyond what the state density bonus allows for. We haven't designated the specific number of spaces that will go to residences versus guests, but our goal and our intent is to provide parking above and beyond what's required for both commercial and residential. And going back to, I think Mayor Shapiro put it well, having enough parking on site is not an option for us. Nothing works if we don't. So we will provide enough parking for our residents and our guests.
Okay, thank you. Any other council questions at this time?
I had several that were not answered that I.
Okay, Councilmember Visagen.
The circulation issues. So give me an idea of what additional kinds of, I know you have a few stop signs here and there, so tell me, are there gonna be any one-way, not streets, but one-way pathways?
We, the current plan doesn't include any one-way realignments. You know, it's something that we can continue to look at as we move forward in design. We do have over 30 agreements in place that we have to work with, and so we do have a lot of negotiations we need to take part in as we move forward. But in addition to the elevated crosswalks and the decorative paving, the signs, the light, the gate arms, et cetera, we'll also have bump outs. We're looking at reducing the drive aisle widths, allowing, assuming a fire department will sign off on it in order to help slow those speeds. So we're looking at a lot of different design features that we're going to incorporate.
Do you have additional traffic, like stop signs, things of that sort that you're gonna insert?
We will include additional stop signs, yes, and, like I said, the, the drive, the parking arms and other types of technology.
Some of my comments, by the way, are not meant to suggest that you should do these things, they're just simply questions, like the parking structure question that I had. So I am assuming you looked at a parking structure possibility, and give me some feedback on why that was rejected in favor of subterranean.
So there's a couple things. I think one of the things that we heard from the community during our outreach is that when it comes to parking for residences, they want a secured parking environment. When it comes to parking for commercial, they want easy access to surface parking, especially in Calabasas, which is not an urban environment. It's, it's still very much suburban. We also heard that it's important to preserve those views along Calabasas Road, and so we've incorporated significant setbacks. The closest building in B will be to Calabasas Road is over, I think, 300 feet, and then, of course, building A, setback even farther.
Is it, is it more expensive to do a parking structure than a subterranean?
It's, they're both very expensive, but we have incorporated the parking structures as part of building A, so, but you're, you're referring to a freestanding parking structure?
Yes.
I don't have the cost offhand, but.
Okay. Because, you know, those you can build up if you needed to in, in the future, and now subterranean would be very difficult.
The community was very clear that they did not like the idea of a parking structure.
Additional security guards, anything along those lines, where will they be, do you have one in the parking lot? Will you have one?
We'll be incorporating additional security measures, including security guard, concierge service for residents. And we're also, as you know, working with the city, and we'll continue to work with the city to explore other ways that we can implement technology to address ongoing security.
How long do you anticipate the time of construction?
It's hard to know. We, we built the commons incredibly quickly, as you recall, so we would.
I do.
Focus on doing the same thing here, especially, as I mentioned, probably fast-tracking building B in as much as possible so that we can move all construction outside of the, the center as much as possible.
And then my, my final question on structure B, I, I really do have a problem with the residential on structure B. It makes it a much more urban setting than I view Calabasas as. What was your, what, why can't retail go on a second floor up there? Assuming, you know, I'm not have a problem with the second floor, I just have a problem with the residential there.
So the residential on building B is located on three of the buildings. One of them is a standalone retail, and then one of them is, has only one level of residential. It is incredibly difficult to operate retail on the second floor, because you just don't have the ground activity or the visibility. What we heard from the community is that they really liked when we incorporated the residential into Pacific Palisades. It helps to sort of act as a transition. Again, it's set back around 300 feet from Calabasas Road. We did end up bringing the height down by about eight feet as part of this review process, and so we've, we've really minimized that height. It's only a few feet over what the zoning code allows really, with the design modifications that we've incorporated into the revised set.
Okay. All right, I have some additional comments, but while we.
Any other questions for the applicant? Councilmember Albrecht.
So many good questions have been asked tonight. When you take, when you go to the back of the commons, where you're proposing for the employee parking, for those of us that have been back there, especially when vendors aren't dropping things off, deliveries, it's pretty spooky. It's, it's pretty quiet. You wouldn't want to be there alone if something happens. So I'm sure there'll be lights, no concerns about that. But what, when the gate opens up, I know many times I'll go through a gate, whether it's, wherever the building is, and I look behind me to see if someone's running in behind me. What would prevent that? Because someone would, that knows that, that when that gate's open, that's an entranceway to a lot of things. It's hard to get that person out, because you won't know where they are or where they're hiding. That's would be a concern. Even one time if it happens, suddenly it's a red flag.
Sure. So again, we'll have security on site, we'll have cameras focused on that access, we'll have concierge. In the, in the rare event that that did happen, we would be able to mobilize incredibly quickly.
Can you lock down the doors?
I'm sure we would be able to. And again, you wouldn't be able to access the building, because, you know, that would be the first point that you'd have to get past. You wouldn't be able to get anywhere.
Okay.
If you, if you were to get inside.
Good point, thank you.
Okay, any other council questions?
I, you know, there's one I neglected, and I was just thinking of it as you were talking, smoking. So is smoking gonna be permitted in the residences?
No.
We have a second-hand smoke control ordinance that, that limits smoking in multifamily.
Correct, but I just wondered if this was a, because this was a pre-existing.
Oh, it would apply to this, because.
It would apply to this, because this part wasn't pre-existing?
The residential component isn't pre-existing, so what are, the ordinance's provisions will apply to the residential, and as landlord Caruso could include in their leases a straight ban on smoking.
Well, that's what I was asking.
And I would, I would concur that we ask the applicant that question.
So that was the question.
We would likely have designated areas where residents could smoke if a resident smoked.
Right, well, we have that already at the commons. Is that what you're talking about, or something, is this something new?
An area for the residences themselves.
Okay. So hopefully they'll be told, because many of them will be coming from areas that don't have such restrictions, they'll be told that they're not to go out into the commons and smoke.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor Pretend Weintraub.
Not a technical question, but do your leases, when at your other projects, permit animals, like dogs and cats?
Yes.
That was all.
Any other questions from council? No? All right. I have no other public speaker cards, so the public hearing is closed officially.
Mayor, I would like to clarify one thing regarding the displacement of the residential or the employee parking spaces next to the civic center. Our understanding is that that's something that we would work out with staff, and the reason that we haven't done that yet is because I understand there are ongoing conversations that the city is having regarding parking in the area in a more global way, and there may be a number of different solutions that we would come up with, but it was our understanding that that's something that we would work out sort of administratively, depending on what's available at the time and what makes the most sense.
And, and it's my understanding that's what's happening. I'm gonna look to our city manager, but that, that it would still come back to council of final approval.
So Mayor, let me address this if I can, and also with our city attorney's help on this. As I've looked at this, there's a discrepancy both in the staff, or in the staff report and then attachment F. So if the council would like to pull those documents, the staff report is on page eight under requested action. And I'll let you get to that point. Page eight of the staff report.
F and A.
Which is.
Page eight.
Under requested action, item number two. That paragraph there states that if this council so chooses, the city manager can negotiate with the applicant regarding the parking spaces. If the council now can turn to attachment F. Page 40. And under consideration number two, the last sentence, it says, "To that end, if the city council were to agree with this easement modification and approve the project, staff suggests requiring a condition that requires the commons at Calabasas LLC to relocate eight automobile spaces at their expense to a mutually agreeable area, either on city property or the commons at Calabasas property to benefit the city." So we have a discrepancy between the, the staff report and that finding. Counsel, or staff would request that the staff report, or I'm sorry, that the finding be adjusted to reflect the staff report, that authorization is given to the, the city manager to do that. The city council can provide parameters at this point on that negotiation, so it does not need to return back to council. Usually, that's usually based on a. Usually, that's usually based on a per-parking-stall cost that we are in discussions with on other projects that we're looking at, and that we're aware of, and which, once we reach that, that negotiated amount, then we could resolve that with the applicant.
Okay.
And I can add to that, that, that the October staff report, that was our initial direction to, to consider, and it was at the planning commission level, but we since changed our rationale to what's in the current staff report, so, yeah.
And I'll concur that the council can delegate to the manager the power to agree to appropriate compensation if the council so chooses.
Well, when you say compensation, there's two different terms there. One is towards parking spaces, compensation can also mean just monetary, so we need to clarify that.
It could be any of the above, as the council would like to desire. It may be wise to give the manager flexibility that the compensation be spaces, or be money to pay for spaces, or other parking, or transportation improvements in the Civic Center area.
Well, the money's not going to do any good if there are no spaces identified, so it should be spaces.
That would be up to the council if you wish to dictate it be parking, money for spaces.
We do have spaces that are identified. Actually, when the city built the senior center, there was an intent to build more parking spaces into the hill on the east side of the senior center. We did not have the money to do that, so it never happened. So, that's an area that the city has been looking at adding additional parking spaces. This, with, through the council's authorization, could go towards funding those parking spaces.
I don't, I don't, but I don't want to limit it.
Staff would recommend preserving some flexibility for compensation for loss of the eight spaces behind the library, as, as makes sense.
And we'll replace it with that, with another eight spaces somewhere else.
Or more.
Or more, depending on the cost.
Yeah, thinking positive. That's the intent, correct.
Well, but, see, I don't want it to just be a lump sum of money with no space identified. That's, that's a zero to me.
I think, I think our problem right now is we're running into potentially other projects that aren't, aren't on the agenda to be discussed.
My suggestion, I think, to meet the goal here would be that if the council so chooses, direct the manager to negotiate appropriate compensation that, with the goal of achieving at least eight new spaces. Allowing for more, but not limiting it, but at least eight new spaces.
But, but the spaces, not just giving us money, and then we don't have any spaces to build.
I think that, since we can't talk about other projects, but I think staff already has, but staff already has ideas for the spaces.
And some of those spaces that staff has identified that might work are on city land, but would be paid by, in part, by others, and in part by the current developer.
If that's not practical, though, I would expect spaces to be provided by Caruso somewhere else.
That would be a negotiating parameter that council could give to, to the manager as a backstop.
And we can say if you can't come to fruition on this, it comes back to council.
That's correct.
Yes, absolutely.
And, and council, I would also not limit it to eight. We hope it's only eight, but we don't want it to be nine or ten, so I'm just...
At least eight.
At least.
Yeah, correct.
All right, any other comments or questions on that item? Okay, then, at this point, hearing, no, is there any additional discussion, or do I have a motion on this item prior to discussion?
Well, I'd like to discuss the height a little bit more.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, did we close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
I did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of all the things that have been satisfied, that's one that just hasn't been, that's just, I mean, it's, it's of concern. We've heard it from the community, we've heard it on the planning commission, and frankly, the height is of concern to me.
Okay. I'll, I'll look to our city attorney, because I thought you talked about this earlier, if you wish to add a comment as to the issue of the height. As to our parameters here today.
Right, the parameters regarding the requested waiver on the height, the applicant has to demonstrate first stage reasonable documentation that the height standard would physically preclude the building of the project at the density proposed, and then, if that bar is met, the city can only deny the waiver if we find that there's a specific adverse impact upon health or safety, and no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid that specific adverse impact, or that the granting of the height limit, height limit waiver is contrary to federal or state law. That's on the straight density bonus law, and those findings may be difficult to make. The last point that was raised, of course, regarding the applicant's need for the city to grant access to the eight parking spaces behind the library, is another bargaining tool that could be used, if the council so chose. It's up to the, that could be discussed if the council majority so chose.
Well, has the first prong of the height been satisfied? The documentation part?
Yes, staff's recommendation is that the council can, can defensively find that the height limit waiver is appropriately granted.
Can find or must find?
Will be difficult to deny, difficult to successfully deny.
And is there, can I follow up on that? Is there any basis in health or safety, which you stated is the number-one condition, that we could not find it?
No.
There's nothing I've seen here.
There's nothing regarding, the height limit isn't a health or safety limit. There's absolutely nothing about a height limit that impacts health or safety. The height limit is an aesthetic standard.
Okay.
Not a health or safety standard. Not that aesthetics aren't important, but the Housing and Climate Act does not grant any importance to aesthetics.
I don't, I don't, I'm not bound by that.
Your colleagues may consider that, though.
Well, I may not.
Of course, we look to the full council.
I will cast my vote accordingly. I'm just saying, I am not bound by it, and I've explained why. I, I don't want to hold up the project because of the height. What I would like, though, because it is an extraordinary height, is there was some language about having staff decide whether something's reasonably modified. I want the council to, if it's going to remain at this height and at this girth, or whatever you're going to call it, then I would like it to return to the council if it's any larger in any dimension.
And Michael and I talked about, that was something that I wanted to make certain of, and he had an appropriate answer.
Based on the condition, it, it cannot get larger.
Yeah.
So, it, that's the cap, I mean, that's your, your actual limit. The only thing that may occur at this point is through final building design, maybe through building code requirements, might get a little bit smaller in some areas, and that's where...
That's, that's probably not going to be a problem for the community.
And I wanted to make sure that anything of any real substance came back to us.
One approach that the council could add, that any change, increasing the size of the project in any dimension returns to the council, allowing reductions at the staff level increases, mindful the height can't go up, but the other dimensions could be increased.
That's what I meant, yes.
That could return to the council. That'd be a modification to condition number three.
I, I would like the council to concur with that.
Can I just?
All, it's not a rejection, it's just a return to the council.
Can I, excuse me, can I just get a clarification? Maybe I heard you wrong, Michael, you said it can't, not just height, but the project can't increase in any fashion, that's what you indicated.
I see the suggested condition is more of a belt and suspender. It's clear, I mean, the, and the way that conditions have been applied in the past is, that is your, your upper limit. If there's modifications that are, result in a smaller project, then it's likely that we'll accept those modifications.
Okay. Any other council comments, questions? Then, do I have a motion on that?
Well, would that language insert it?
I think that's item...
Yep, staff would have no objections to that.
Do you wish to make?
No.
Anyone wish to make a motion?
Hope I get it right, because based on this additional information, so, the requested action, the recommendation of the planning commission, consider adopting City Council Resolution Number 2023-1880, approving the addendum to the programmatic environmental impact report, project, and all associated entitlements and requests, as is, or with adjustments to findings and/or conditions of approval as desired, and, second, if the city council decides to adopt City Council Resolution Number 2023-1880, approving the project, the council should further authorize the city manager to negotiate appropriate compensation from the applicant in return for voluntary adjustments to existing easements benefiting the city for parking stall loading and fire lane access, the loss of approximately eight parking spaces located behind the Calabasas Library, and reconfiguration of the parking loading area behind the library to re-accommodate a loading space with a library. And see discussion, Attachment F, Section P, PP 39-40. Or, direct staff to prepare a resolution denying the project to be considered.
No.
No, yeah, just the first two.
Remove that, sorry that.
Okay, that's the or.
I'll second it with the amendment.
With the additional adjustment to condition number three, thank you.
Right.
Okay, any further discussion on this item? Then, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion with the addendum or adjustment made to that, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes five-zero. Thank you very much to everybody who worked so hard on this. Appreciate it. All right. Now, we'll move to task force reports. We'll move to Mayor Potemoytrub first.
Yes. Peter and I, for the homeless task force, had a call with LASSA to talk about the upcoming homeless count.
Okay. Hold on one sec. And we're, we're still finishing business, if you don't mind. You're welcome to sit and enjoy, or step out, as you wish. Thank you, go ahead.
Just, Peter, yeah, Peter and I met with LASSA, and every month I say, every meeting I say, "I'm going to write down my task force meetings," which...
LASSA? LASSA?
Yeah, LASSA.
Okay.
No, homeless.
Okay, with Gibbons, the mayor Gibbons?
No, 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 that Peter and I met with, to talk about the upcoming homeless count with the LA County Housing Service Authority.
Okay. I'm on that committee with Mayor Gibbons?
No, 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 not the committee, the group that's doing the homeless count.
Oh, my apologies.
Yeah, sorry.
Tired.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any meetings? Probably.
Sure, in addition to that meeting, and I also attended the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy meeting last Monday, a number of items were discussed, and amongst them, the city of Calabasas was granted an additional fund for our wildfire prevention efforts.
Great. Councilmember Albrecht, do you, oh, how much?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Agura Reorg last night, and welcomed, welcomed very nicely, and asked to speak, and emphasized how important it is for our two cities to support each other. Mayor Elise Buckley-Weber was voted into office, and it was a wonderful evening, and I look forward to attending the CPA Alliance meeting tomorrow, and that little group has been doing wonders with saving power.
Okay.
That's it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Visagen.
I attended my first League of California Cities Board meeting in Carlsbad last week, and we talked about a number of priorities, and then I'll be ringing it forward and summarizing to the council in a report. And also, I missed it, but Peter, there was a community center board meeting last week as well. I don't know if there's anything coming out of that needed to be reported, but I wasn't there unfortunately.
There was, as a matter of fact, I should probably report that. It's been a busy week. The Joint Powers Authority for the Gori Hills Calabasas Community Center voted to initiate dissolving the organization, insofar as sending a request to the Calpers for an estimate of how much it would cost to settle our pension debt, so that we could dissolve the JPA. Want to be careful to let you know that that does not mean we've made the decision to dissolve the JPA, but we have to take that step in order to get that estimate from Calpers to make a decision. That's the only action we took.
Thank you. Did you have anything else? Okay. Oh, me, sorry. I, tomorrow, tonight, and tomorrow, I'm attending the SCAG Economics Summit. I will probably not make tonight's meetings. In downtown, I will report back the summaries and to our budget committee, of course. VICA, I'll be at the VICA Annual Meeting on Friday. And next week, the Valley Economic Alliance has their annual meeting, and our new mayor at that time will present on behalf of the city. And next week, also, is it next week or the week after, certainly, Alicia and I will be meeting, along with others, with the school district, school board, to try and come up with some good positive things we can all do together in the future. That's it for me. Anything, does city manager have anything to report?
And just a couple items, Mayor, and Councilman Kraut, you did acknowledge the $200,000 grant from the Conservancy, the most recent one. But you also acknowledged previously that the other $200,000 for the open space inventory, I believe, I just wanted to make sure that, so we've received two $200,000 grants from the Conservancy. Just wanted to...
Four hundred.
That, that's correct, and I thought we had a council meeting in between those two, but maybe I didn't announce it.
I think you did, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that two grants from then, so, very great partner, and we appreciate the, the collaboration and, and assistance from the Conservancy. And then, finally, council, we are doing interviews this week for the assistant city manager position. We hope to make an appointment after the background check and so forth, and make that announcement to, to you and the communities very soon.
Great, thank you very much. Then, the city council will adjourn, actually, Mr. City Attorney will adjourn to a closed session meeting this Friday.
Yes. Current indications are, we're going to need that, that closed session discussion at 5:00 PM.
5:00 PM in council chambers?
Yes.
Okay. And then, followed by the next regularly scheduled council meeting, which will be reorganization Wednesday, December 13, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Thanks very much, and good night, happy holidays. Forgot to say that.